Welcome to the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen meeting of September 24th. Could everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all for that. All right. First item on the agenda is National Grid Verizon Joint Union Poll Petition, Shoshine Street, number 30805613, which was continued from a previous meeting. Is there anyone here for that? Can you come up and sit at the table and introduce yourself for the record?
Hello? Hello? Okay. My name is Alec Berthong. I'm here to represent National Grid in the matter of installing three polls.
Okay.
Shoshine Street.
The floor is yours, sir.
Well, we seek approval to install three polls in the public right of way on Shoshine Street for development going on at 1600 and I believe 1500 Shoshine Street. Yeah. That's...
Okay. Board members, we'll start with Mr. Ryder. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My only question is, there are no polls that are being abandoned with this, right? I know in previous projects, you guys have been moving to different polls. All existing polls are staying in place and are continuing to be used, correct?
Yes, correct.
Perfect. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, glad Mr. Hardeman's here for this. Mr. Hardeman, you know, this is the area where we installed the new sidewalks. And so you're comfortable that none of these poles are going to be in the sidewalk area or causing any issues with snow and ice removal along those new sidewalks? Because I know we have to, even if they're not in the sidewalk area, you're going to still plow them and get them clear. So are you comfortable with the locations?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Krabman, I have reviewed the locations. I've met on site with the representative from National Grid, and this will not impact our snow operations.
Okay. But there's nothing in the sidewalk area? There's nothing...
These poles are going to be located outside the sidewalk, you know, likely at least two to three feet past it, which won't impact us at all.
Okay. Thank you. And for the future, you're new to our meetings, but we've had other people here before. If you're going to be the new representative coming to these meetings, that's going to be the question every single time. Just to let you know, you know, we're working with the residents. They want, you know, access to walkability in this community. And we're diligently trying to put sidewalks through the community. And we're coming up against a lot of, you know, work that's being done by the utility companies. And we'll put a sidewalk in, and the utility company puts a pole in the middle of it. Or they put something in, but it's in the right of way that will be something that we're going to be putting a sidewalk in. So I mean, it's a pretty simple thing. You know, we know we have so many edge of roadway what's out there. You know what the typical width of a sidewalk is. If you are about to put something in or somebody hits a pole and you relocate that pole or any other reason why, we're looking for that to be in the back of the sidewalk area. So either we maintain our sidewalks or future installation, we don't have to have you move the pole to install the thing. So if you're doing any type of work in the town, please take that into consideration when you're doing so. Okay? Thank you.
All right. I have no questions. Most of them have been answered. Is this a public hearing? Does anybody from the public want to speak in regards to this poll petition? Seeing nobody raise to the microphone. What is the pleasure? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's a four zero vote. What is the pleasure of the board on the poll petition?
Make a motion to approve the poll petition by National Grid Verizon for Shoshine Street.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Ryder to approve the poll petition, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a four zero vote. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, any residents wish to speak? Can you introduce yourself for the record, sir?
Hello? Can you hear?
Yep.
Okay. I'm Jay Delaney. I live on 141 Patricia Drive in Tewksbury. I'm here to call... I've already talked to a number of people, but I'm here to talk about my water bill. And I got the results of the same period of time. Okay? From the year 2020 up until 2024. And in 2020, my water bill was a little bit higher because I had to change the liner in my swimming pool. So I expected my water bill to be higher. Then in the past, my water bill has kind of stayed all the same right through until I got the bill this month. My bill was $4,000. Now, I've talked to Mr. Hardeman, Mr. Montori. They're going to go down and check my meter and so forth. But I'm here tonight because nothing has changed in my house. I didn't put any water in my pool. My sprinkler system runs. It's automatic. It's not just the hose running in the yard. Okay? I even had the company, I've already got the water bill. I even had the company come down to check it to make sure there's no leaks. And there is no leaks in my house anywhere. I had a plumber go through all the faucets, everything in my house. So the thing is, I don't know... I understand that when the water goes through the meter, the meter is going to read it. But this was ridiculous. I have no idea why it could be that high. And I'm just looking for some assistance. That's all.
All right.
And that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Montori, you're looking into that situation?
Yeah, we're going to pull the records. And I told Mr. Delaney that Kevin and I will talk about it tomorrow, probably Thursday, and we'll get back to him by the end of the week. We don't know what the outcome will be, but we'll look at all the data.
Okay. Any other residents? Any other comments? Seeing nobody else rushing to the podium, we'll move on to the next thing. New business. Approval of Halloween trick or treat hours, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I don't have a date. Is it going to be Halloween Day?
Halloween Day.
Okay. So that's the 30th?
31st.
31st. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Same as last year, Pat.
Same as last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the trick or treat hours for October 31st for the hours of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that. Okay. We have a motion made by Mr. Krabman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, four to zero. Next on the agenda is Trahan reuse discussion. The reason I put this on the agenda was I wanted to get the feel for the board of what they thought about the presentation at the Trahan School that we had last week. You know? I think this is an opportunity for us. I don't think it's oversaturated with resident and everything. We saved the $2 million. As Mr. Ryder stated at the last meeting, we can spend $2 million and tear the school down and just see an empty lot. Or we can invest $4 million in it, or a little bit more than $4 million, and get 46 units. And I think that's a reasonable ask. So I'm going to start with Mr. Krabman, see how you want to proceed with this.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. That was me, actually, who said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just the cost originally was around $2 million. Could be up to $2.5 million. And with that cost, we have an empty field with that. And that's something we have to go to the residents. It's not something we have allocated funds for. We'll have to go not only for that location, but also for the North Street School if we decide to do something similar with that. $5 million is a lot to come up with for the residents. So I like the thought of exploring every avenue of what we can. We put it out. We did an RFP. We tried to get proposal, what's going on. The number, I mean, in the top three things that we were talking about as a board, we were talking about the lack of housing, and specifically senior housing. There's an 18 to 25-year wait. It's ridiculous of what we are, where we are with that. And we have an opportunity that we have land that we own, a building that we own, and something that developer put a proposal in front of us to reuse the building. Not only just not tear it down, but to gutter it out, get historic test credits, bring it down to its frame pretty much, get rid of all the hazardous materials, the windows, all the rest, and rebuild it to make it a suitable location, which adding an additional building on would create 40-something units of senior housing. I know when we talk about senior housing, it's open to everyone around the state. It's not just far Tewksbury. But I've been in this, doing this a long time, working on community development boards. They tend, when you're talking about senior housing, they tend to stay in the areas where they grew up. I don't think we're going to be getting people from, you know, Cape Cod or other western part of the state coming here, looking to move into Tewksbury. It's going to be people, the majority of people are going to be from Tewksbury, maybe some people from Wilmington, maybe some Bill Ricker. But it's going to be the general vicinity because people tend to want to stay in the areas that they're familiar with and they grew up. So I think it will be local residents that will be filling that building up, that will have, you know, will have a local preference with it because of this development that we'll be able to do. I like the proposal. I'd like to hear a lot more on it. But I think that's a suitable use that will not... I don't think when you're building senior housing, it's going to cause a traffic concern down there. That if you built an apartment building that would have multiple vehicles per unit, that would, that's what it seems like the residents are really concerned about, building something that brings multiple cars to each unit and filling up, causing traffic concerns. I don't think a senior housing would cause that. And they're talking about also reusing some of the land to make something for the community as well. So saves the residents $2.5 million, serves a purpose. We need senior housing in this community. We need all kinds of housing, but we definitely need some senior housing. And it, like I said, I don't think it'll cause concern or problems down there. The residents will have a chance to have their voice heard. But to my, to my opinion, I think it's something that would be beneficial to the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated the other night, I've come around on the reuse of the building. That is not an architectural marvel like some of the other developments they've redone, but it sounds like they have a pretty decent plan. My two questions revolve around, one from the other night. I'd like to see what the minimum looks like. They even said that they came in and asked for the maximum. So I would like to see what the minimum looks like. Also, under the current proposal, I understand with that being the maximum, they talked about willingness to work with us on the number of subsidized units, affordable units, et cetera. I'd like to see how we can maximize that. They seem willing to engage, so I think we should take that opportunity and engage with them. And then I have a question for the town manager, through you, Mr. Chairman. Have we heard back on the other proposal?
No. We've reached out originally for a meeting tonight. You met with the Chelmsford Housing Authority group. We got no response. The applicant emailed me on Monday asking when he's going to hear something. I said, "We're waiting to schedule something with you. Let us know." And then we heard nothing.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, so that's, those are the questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Short of one for you. Do we know when we were looking to make a decision on this?
Well, I was looking to get a motion tonight to at least have Mr. Montori move forward with the process. You know, I don't think we have the motion to approve it, but we can make a motion to move forward, to start negotiating with him because he's come back and he'll answer your questions as well as Mr. Krabman's questions. But I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward. And it's an investment in the community versus an expense to the community.
That's exactly the engagement I was looking for. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'll echo what Mr. Krabman stated. I think it's, you know, a great opportunity. I would like to explore, after looking at the, you know, the presentation a little further. They talked about the number, that 55 number being the real sweet spot where it works. I'd like to see what that would look like. It, you know, what the rendering would look like. Maybe that would potentially create a courtyard feel with some units in the back. Maybe it's just one-floor units. Maybe they could incorporate that. Obviously involve the neighborhoods again. But I think the presentation that they put together was a great presentation. They were very passionate about reusing the property, reusing the school, how it would be incorporated into the neighborhood. So I think it, we have the funds sitting in an account that is just sitting there. And that's been this board, and I know other boards have talked about how we use that money towards housing. And I think this is a great opportunity. So I'd like to see potentially some of those renderings, but also allow Mr. Montori to move forward and keep in that dialogue going. And I know they would like something around November. Through you to Mr. Manager, somewhere around November, they would like the approval process so they can get started, so they can get in that queue like we discussed.
Okay. Mr. Montori, how do we move forward on this? Do we just approve?
So I wouldn't approve it yet. You can authorize me to start discussions and negotiations with the applicant to go over their financial proposal. I'll ask the questions tonight. The minimum, what's the minimum look like? What's the maximum look like? Any other questions the board has, you can, you know, shoot me an email. But we'll start that discussion with, I'll start that discussion with the applicant. And then at the next meeting on the 22nd, we can put this on for approval based on what I provide you for their final agreement.
Okay.
So I would just...
Would you have them come back with some type of rendering before?
I can do, I can see if we can get something.
You know, so we know what it looks like now. As Mr. Ryder said, you know, with the additions of more units or less units, I'd like to have them sit down with us. But you move forward with the negotiation, and that will be part of it.
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, could I have a motion to have Mr. Montori move forward with the Trahan School reuse RFP?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to give the town manager the authority to go and negotiate with the applicant that came before us for the reuse of the Trahan.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Krabman, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a four zero vote for the 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, before we close that out, I just have one last question for the town manager. I know we had this discussion, but we had another developer come in as well on something else. And they brought up the discussion about how we're just over the 10% for being, you know, in a position where a 40B could come in and build something where we'd have no say. So by putting these units in there, I mean, all these units would count as affordable toward this?
They would.
Yeah. So we'd have 40 different units for senior housing that would help us with our number to raise that 10, instead of being 10.04. Maybe we're going to, you know, at least get to 10.1 or 10.2 or whatever it may help. I'm not sure what the numbers would be. But if we were to be able to put those through, if you could give us those numbers as well, if we, if this was, proposal went through, the minimum, the maximum number, how this would help us with those numbers as well.
I can get you that by the end of the week.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Krabman. Okay. We already did that. We're on to the next. This is a retail marijuana application process discussion. I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to get the sense of the board, how they want to move forward with the retail marijuana applications. We have, we don't obviously have as many as we did in the beginning of the process. We have one license. We have one applicant that we've had for at least a month, maybe longer. We know we have another application. At least we believe another application is coming in. The applicant has held a host, has held a community meeting. They have not submitted their application yet. They said they will be shortly. And as we know, we are in the middle of a legal issue with an applicant who didn't get a license seeking an injunction to hold the process until further court proceedings. So obviously, we need to wait to hear back from the court, which we will do. We expect to have an answer on that sometime in October. In the meantime, how does the board want to proceed with the current application and the potential of a future applicant? If the board wants to wait for both and hear them both at the same time, that's, that's not a bad idea. The only problem is the new applicant will need to go through the planning board site plan approval process based on what they're doing. If you wait until that person is done with that and you still want to hear both at the same time, that's leaving a long time for the current applicant to wait. So my recommendation, if the board's interest, if the board to consider, would be, once we get the second application, hear them both at the same time while that second applicant is going through the planning board process. That way, you get them heard and you can make a decision if you want to make a decision for something to think about.
So we would hear both of them? I don't have a problem with hearing both of them as long as the applicant who hasn't gone through the planning board at least has an application or a hearing date.
Right. That's how we handled it before. They were, if they were into the process, the board would consider hearing it. So they would need to file with both their application with the select board as well as to get their process going with the planning board.
Okay. Mr. Ryder.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to town manager. My understanding is if we do start to hear, the injunction will be, ultimately, the court case will push to have an injunction. So we can't hear any further applicants? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, that's the discussion right now. We'll know sometime in early October, mid-October, how that goes. They may say there's an injunction. They may say no. We'll let the board hear the applicants and make a decision.
Again, I, you know, I'll defer to, you know, legal counsel to tell us if this is going to put the town in any position.
That's why I wouldn't do anything until we hear back from the courts. No doubt.
So that's all I have for right now, Mr. Chair.
So this is one, we can't hear an application or we can't give a license?
It's, the first issue with the courts is going to be, is there an injunction not to hear any more license or give other licenses?
I just want to clarify that.
So that's what's going to be in front of us.
That's my concern, just violating. Because if we, the moment we put a motion, something on the agenda to hear, that applicant will file, could file sooner, that could put the town in jeopardy.
We're not recommending, the administration's not recommending you hear any applicants at this point until we hear back from the courts and until town council says we can.
Okay. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. It sounds like we're, while we're having this discussion, we're not really going to make a decision until we hear back from town council.
Absolutely. But I just want to get a feel because applicants are asking, how's it going to work? We understand there's a court case, but, you know, do I have to go through? The second applicant especially saying, you know, is if I put in an application, I start the planning board process, am I going to be able to be heard in front of the select board? So it's just, just a question and they're asking. And then it's, it's a fantasy issue to both applicants, the one that's waiting and then the one that, the one that is putting one in just wants to know, will they be heard?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to counsel. I have no additional thoughts on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Krabman.
Yeah, I have, I look at it two ways. I understand that we have a court case. I understand that we can't do anything right now. But that's the select board. Is the, can the other applicant go in front of the planning board and go through that process through there?
Probably.
And that's, you know, that's, then it should be, you know, why would they wait to, you know, to do that?
Yeah, the second applicant's not waiting. He's just hasn't gotten this information to us.
So, I mean, it sounds like it may work its way out where, yeah. If the applicant, if the second applicant, I don't want to have an application in front of us and wait indefinitely for somebody to decide to file their process or do whatever they want, waiting to decide if this is going to happen. If they're really, you know, serious about filing something in there, I'd like to know the location. I'd like to know, you know, do they have agreements in place? And, and go before the planning board. And in the meantime, you know, we can, they can start looking at the location, what, if it's approved or whatever, because they're going to, that has to take place anyway. So before we hear it, we got to wait for all that to happen anyway. So while we're waiting for the litigation to be resolved, I think the other group should be going through. If they continue to wait and the litigation is resolved, I don't want them to say, oh, now we're going to go through the planning board. This is, it's not our duty to have them, they know what the process is. If they're not, if they're not following the process, I don't want to hold somebody else up because they're not following the procedure.
Yeah, we agree.
They could file anything they want. They could go through, they could go to zoning. There may be multiple things that may come in place with the other location. And so get approval. And if they're ready, when this thing gets resolved, we'll hear both applicants. If they haven't done what they're supposed to do, I think as I, you know, we're giving them the notice that they can go and file with that as long as the courts allow them. I understand if the court does not allow them to go to the planning board either, that's a whole different story.
I can check that with counsel.
Yeah. But if they're, but if they have given the, their permission to go and do the things they have to do before they even get to us, have them go do it. And then come to us. And then hopefully, maybe this all works out and we'll hear both applications in November.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
That gives me, that gives us an idea what to say to them.
Yeah.
All right. All right. That being of that conversation, now we're up to Tewksbury Affordable Home Bill, request for funding. Is there anyone here for that? Gentlemen, if you come up, introduce yourself with name and address for the record.
Bruce Penelitis, 218 Foster Road.
Vinnie Fratalla, 81 Windsor Drive.
Presentation, you want me to put it on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
You have an H9?
Let Jason help because I know he's been having some issues with it, so.
Oh, it's over there.
Okay. So that isn't ticking. Okay.
That's what that is.
I knew there was a reason in front of you, Mark.
How you turn this thing on?
There you go.
I think so. Who's going to turn? James came, huh?
There you go. You guys got it up there, too?
It's on our screens here. I'm wondering if it's going to go on this one over. Oh, there it is.
Upgrades, huh?
Yeah. We've come a long way since you left.
All you take was to get rid of me, huh? All right. Mr. Chairman, good to go or?
Yep.
Thank you. So this is kind of an update. We last came in front of you on August of 2022, referencing this project when you first authorized the transfer. Just to remind you, this is what we told you we were going to do. So we're talking about a property. You can see it there outlined in the yellow, a very small lot. It's less than a tenth of an acre. The existing home was to be demoed. It has been. And we're working on replacing it with, with a single-family home. Originally, we thought we'd complete in 2024. It's looking more like spring of '25. There were some back taxes that you covered from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we mentioned at the time, we might come back for more support and hence the reason we're here tonight. So I'm going to let Vinnie talk you through the project. So I'm going to let Vinnie talk you through the project. He's really been leading the, managing the project with the contractors that we've had on site so far, so I'll let him take over.
Okay, well, we started the project on our 97 Florence Ave. The building was vacant, there's a picture right here up there showing the building right there, it was vacant and very, very bad condition. We ended up going in, it was loaded with junk, it was loaded with an oil tank, it was loaded with asbestos. There wasn't a pipe, there wasn't a wire in the house, strip beer. So with that being said, we went in, we mitigated all the asbestos, got it out of there. We ended up, I ended up speaking to all the neighbors in the area, they were ecstatic that we were going in to do something with the house being vacant for 15 years. The neighbor on the right of the house was talking to me about how dangerous the house was with the bricks falling off the, off the roof onto his property and almost hitting one of his, one of his kids. So he was ecstatic about the fact that we are going to be doing a new house there. So we're in the process of tearing the house down. We talked to a couple of contractors, they wanted no part of it because it was so close to the fence on the right that they were worried about having to replace the fence to the $215,000 or $20,000 and wanted no part of it. So we ended up having a gentleman come down, said he'd take care of it. He couldn't go in there with machinery because of the fence, ended up taking the entire building down by hand. So if you look at the picture on the right, that's the process of the building being torn down. He had, he had dumpsters there, pickup trucks there, and get rid of the entire building. So, which was great. With that, we ended up moving the building over from its existing location to the middle of the lot. So we have 15 feet on the left, 15 feet on the right, making more, more compliant with, with the zoning on the sides. We had to go in and remove all the overgrown trees that were there, spoke to all the neighbors. They were glad that we were doing that. A couple of neighbors had tree concerns that they were going to fall down on his property, so he was more than willing to have it taken down. We paid for that expense as well. We used local companies in Tewksbury. Mark Bradley came down, did all the site work, did all the digging of the foundation. Eric Murray and other Tewksbury gentlemen came down, did all the foundation work. We had all the, all the sewer tied in. And with that being said, I started to approach Shawshin Tech. So Shawshin Tech was more than willing to come in, once the framing is done, once it's tight to the weather. So they're coming in, once this building is tight to the weather, there's a piece of construction site on, on the screen right now, that was today's picture. So they're willing to come in, doing all the electrical work, do all the plumbing work. They're going to coordinate some of the finish work for us. But there's a lot to be done moving forward still, you know, but it's a small house, it's a 20-foot wide by 28-foot long house, so it's not a big lot. You could drive by it, driving down Florence Ave. But it'll become an affordable home for, for some resident of Tewksbury or somebody to live in and be added to our totals for affordable housing. We'll be generating, the site will be generated as a house again, a family will be in there. They'll be generating taxes for the town, so I think it's a win-win going forward with this property. And again, we're here to ask for some money, so. Bruce can take you on through as we go through the timeline and everything else, so.
Yeah, just as a quick reminder where we are, like I said, August 22nd, you approved the transfer of the property to Tewksbury Home Build and the payment of the back taxes. It took a little while, we finished that transfer until the winter, we then went through an application process for the demo. The abatement that Vinnie talked about, there was a lot of asbestos, cost over $36,000 to get just rid of the asbestos in the building. And then started the application for building permit during the summer, the foundation and site work was done, and then now, as you saw in the last picture, framing has started, and I think that's only been, been maybe a week. So they're, they're really going great guns on that. And they're going to make that house weather tight before the winter. The goal then is all the rough plumbing, electrical, HVAC, everything this winter and into the spring to complete it next spring. And then next summer, we'd be looking at the lottery and family selection, we'd likely work with the housing authority again as we did for the last house. And as Vinnie said, we're planning on working with Shaw Tech, but we wanted to come to you with worst-case budget-wise, and then we obviously can work from there. So just to go over that, where we are, the numbers in the green at the top sort of four items have been done. Thankfully, we're not paying any permit fees, the, the town did waive those, as they have for many of our projects. We, we are assuming in this case, what's on the screen right now, that we get no donations, no donations of money, no donations of labor, and so forth. We expect to, but we also have to plan for not getting those, and that's where the number comes from. With the work that's been done, we still have just under $288,000 of work to do. We have $145,000 in the bank, which we intend to spend to zero to get this project done. That leaves us a deficit of about 142. So the ask is for up to 145. We have in the past received funds from this board through the Housing Trust Fund. The way we have done those in the past is there was an initial distribution, I'll try that again, and I'm suggesting here 45,000 to start us, get, keep things moving. What, the last thing we want is anything to slow down, given the work, the sort of timeframe we're working on. And then as, as we complete work, we show that we utilize those funds. In the past, we provided those receipts, invoices, everything from the contractors that work for us. We would present those to the Town Manager's office, usually through Mr. Sadwick, and then that would kick off another distribution. If we don't need it all, we won't ask for it. If we do, we will. We are still looking for additional funding, we just recently applied for a grant through St. Cobain, and we're still looking for others. And obviously, the partnership with Shawshin Tech would lower these numbers to some extent, but nothing signed, we have no approval yet from the Shawshin Tech School Committee, so we have to work from the perspective of, we may not get that, and we have to work from that. And our intention when the project is done, and we talked about this with the Town Manager ahead of time, at one point, we talked about, well, can you just loan us money from the trust fund? And that was more complicated than just giving us the money. So what we would, what we're saying is that our intention would be to essentially give back, if it's 145 after we sell the home, which we would sell as an affordable housing project, we would look to distribute that back to the town as, as essentially a donation or a gift. We can't, the loan process would be too complicated. So that's the way we're approaching it. And so that's, that's all I have for you. I'm happy to take some questions, either Vinnie or I, and I should note Jim, Jim Kenyon is here as well, he's our treasurer, so he's really got to worry about those numbers.
All right, thank you for that. It was a good presentation. We'll start off with Mr. Maggie this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bruce, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Yeah, I remember when we approved this, it's a great project, I'm glad you guys have made so much progress. I have absolutely no problem with the request. My only caveat would be, can we do a reimbursement as opposed to kind of giving money upfront? It looks like you guys planned this well enough, where you have 145 left in your funds. I feel a lot better about, you know, reimbursing your costs as they come in as opposed to...
Yeah, I, I mean, we're going to do what you ask us to do, but what I'll point out is that we're, you know, we're already, we haven't been charged yet for the foundation, we're doing the framing, we're doing the windows, the exterior doors, and we're doing the roofing in the next two weeks. That's going to take a big chunk out of that 145. If we then have to go and buy HVAC materials, we have got to buy all the rough plumbing, all the rough electric, we're going to quickly deplete our funds, and that's why the suggestion was an initial distribution of 45. I can guarantee you, we're going to ask for at least 45. And then after that, we would be demonstrating that we actually used it, how we used it, and then ask for the next 25 to keep us going. We will do what the board, you know, tells us, or, you know, asks or authorizes the, the Town Manager to do, but for, in the past, it's worked really well on our projects this way because it keeps us ahead of our schedule. If at any point we're, we're delayed, you know how, many of you understand the construction process, if you're delayed, you lose a contractor for a couple of weeks, it could be a month, right? And we, we just like not for this to slip, so.
Absolutely. I, I apologize, I, I thought we usually did reimbursements. So through you, the Town Manager, what's the turnaround time on a reimbursement?
If we process all our bills on Thursday, Friday, if I have all the paperwork in my hand, and so we, you know, gets approved, I mean, goes in on Thursday, Friday, checks cut the following Thursday, Friday.
Okay. And it's, do we usually do, how have these projects worked in the past? Have we done reimbursement?
Yeah, Bruce, if the board feels comfortable with that, I'm sure I can work on something with Bruce and Vinnie with the cost they have coming, that they just show you those costs, and then turnaround the money in a week.
Perfect. Does that work for you guys? Does it work turnaround time?
It certainly will.
Again, it's, I know it's not, I know it's not optimal, but is that, can you, can you be successful with that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, and good luck. So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grabman.
Well, I love the project. I love the fact that you're building it and you're looking at every affordable way of building this home without spending money. You've got local developers, which I'm sure are giving you a good price, I'm sure, and I know in the past, a lot of them have donated to do those things. You bring in Shawshin Tech, where you're going to bring in, you know, the workers, but you still got to buy the materials. I'm not expecting Shawshin Tech to be providing the electrical and the things, you know, you still have to buy the materials.
That's correct.
Even though you may have the labor force to help you do that. It has to be inspected by somebody, it has to go through, I understand all the things you may be going through. I have a question, though. Like you have remaining funds of 145,000, that's for this project, though, specifically, right? So let me...
That's, well, it's for this project, we always go project to project, so whatever our checking balance is, that's our remaining funds for that project, so that's what we have, right, today?
No, and like I said, and I like what you do with these projects. So, I mean, I'm looking at the total amount of 145,000. It's not an astronomical number, especially out of our Affordable House Trust Fund, where we have a couple of million dollars in there. What do we have, five million?
Five point seven.
Five point something million dollars in there. So 145,000 out of that is, yes, we, we have a lot of other projects that we're looking at as well to try to do these, where we've been talking about, you know, building things for the community, but this is going to be a building a home, an affordable home in our community. I just trying to figure out, like, what's the best way to do it? I understand Mr. Maggie's thing of doing a reimbursement, that's a good process, but I didn't know if there was a way of us to give you, like, give you the 45 and maybe the first installment upfront, and then bring on your reimbursements, and then if you need the other 75 as those come through, we do it. But I know you have to spend money upfront, you have to buy the process, I don't want to delay you of waiting. If you have to wait to, we're getting through the fall, and we're on, the clock is ticking. So if you have to purchase the materials, and even though it may be only a week turnaround, a week in, in October compared to what you may do, you're going to get a shut-off pretty soon in November of what you can do. So I, I'd like to have you at least some money in hand where you can purchase whatever you need, and then if there's more, then you can come back for a second phase of, you know, here's 70, come back for the other 75 as you need it, or something like that, and then we can go through that. I don't know if that's beneficial to you, I just don't want you to, I mean, do you have the funds on hand to purchase the things that you may need?
So in the, the next, you know, next three, four, five parts of the project, yes, but after that, you know, we're go to zero. And so that was, the purpose for the ask was the initial 45, just to keep us solvent on the project, and then we would produce the fact that we spent those 45 appropriately on the project, and that technically would then open up the next 25, and we asked for potentially 25 four times to get to 145. And we're comfortable doing it either way, but obviously, that way's better for us, it gives us some flexibility, and it is pretty consistent with what we did on the other projects that, that the Select Board has been, has given, you know, given us money for. So we will work with whatever we need to do to get the project done, but that would certainly be easier for us.
No, like you said, if this, if we were talking about March and April, and we were talking about waiting a couple of weeks for getting reimbursement and things like that, I'd be no problem with it. But we're in October and November, and I'm just, like I said, I don't want a delay of whatever it is, what may happen. So I'll listen to the rest of the board, but I wouldn't mind giving you that upfront my personally, to get you at least, you have money in the bank to go purchase what you need.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grabman. My opinion on the financing end of it is, I like the way you presented it. I'm happy with that, because you're only asking for 45, you're coming back with receipts, you asked for your other 25, so I don't have an issue with that. And in the long run, we're getting the money back. That's, that's a no-brainer, you know, so I don't have a problem of how they request the money. So that's all I have to say. So...
Me? Anyone?
I missed you, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It's all right. You didn't look right. It's okay.
How'd you miss him?
No, again, thank you for the presentation, I love the project, you know, I've been involved, involved in programs like this in my past, I think it's a great opportunity to bring a family to homeownership, you know? Just so people know, and I know I've talked to Vinnie about this, there's, similar to other projects, they have, once you have that family, do they invest in, do they donate some time towards working on the project? Will that be part of this one?
It would, it would depend on the timing. So with the last project, so when we partnered with Lowell Habitat for Humanity, there was, there's a requirement for those folks. When we did the 1047 South Street, that was the intention, we were looking actually for a veteran family. It turned out that a suitable veteran did not apply, and we ended up not going with a veteran, but another affordable unit. In that case, the house was done before the family selection. In this case, it's probably going to be similar. But once we know we're good to go, you know, we'll begin to work with the Housing Authority to sort of get that lottery, get ready to go, so that we don't, because we've had delays in the past, going from construction to that housing, to that housing lottery.
Yeah.
And if we have that gap, the house is going to be done, so there won't be anything for them to do. But if they are selected prior to it being done, we will certainly have volunteer days over there. There's things that the contractors and subcontractors will do, but there'll be plenty of stuff for, where we may have volunteers to help us clean up the lot, do a little painting, a little finish work, things like that. We've done that at all of our properties.
Sure.
I think, I mean, just looking at your timeline, if that could be potentially pushed up, you know, it, it's nice to have that family, you know?
Absolutely.
Putting a little sweat equity into, to their, their property.
Yep.
So, again, I think a great project, I, the, the presentation, the way you presented it for the funding, I'm okay with. As the Chair stated, we're going to get the money back at the sale. So I think, give you the money, get your, get you guys going, be able to start to, I know there is a delay on materials, so, and the supply house is a calling, it's in, you want to be able to purchase, and, you know, I've run into that. So I think the presentation was great, and I'm supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just another comment, gentlemen, the 145-figure machine on the screen is now down to about 130. I just paid two checks today, one to Wilmington Builders and one to the foundation contractor that did the work for us, so that money goes quick. Materials aren't cheap, and time is of the essence. If we don't jump on Shawshin Tech as far as getting them in soon, then they'll go on to another project, and that's what I don't want to happen. So, so the building should be framed by the end of the week. With that being said, the roof will go on next, Shawshin Tech is going to be scheduled to come in right after that, and they're working on all the schematics for all the electrical, all the plumbing. They have to get a permit from the state, I believe, for the plumbing, they're working on that now. But if we don't jump on this ASAP, then they'll move on to another project, and I don't want that to happen. It's a good, we worked with them before doing the South Street project, and they did a phenomenal job getting it done for us, you know, so. I can't not mention Matt Ginsburg in this process, I was calling him, asking him a couple of questions, because I'm new to this permit process with the town and everything else, and he actually volunteered to help. I'm like, listen, Matt, I'll take any, any help you can get. He, he volunteered to be the general contractor in this whole process, and we needed one of those to get all these permits started and going. And he's been spot-on as far as coordinating with some contractors for us, some of the contacts that he has. So again, no one's getting many money here, all of our time is volunteered, his time is being volunteered, we're just paying for materials and for contractors to come in and help us get this project done. It's, it's almost October, we want to get it closed up and tied up, tied up for the weather, so, but, so with that, thanks for your, you know, help and support on this project, so.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. What is the pleasure of the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I know they're looking for the initial distribution of 45,000, but my feeling is that we should give them a little bit more to get them up and running, because it's coming to the end. I'd like to give them the 45,000 and the first subsequent 25,000, give them $70,000 to begin, and then if they need the extra 75 as it goes along, they can come back to us. They're going to be coming back and doing it. This way, they have funds to spend, and if they have to purchase things as they're going along, if they need the 145,000, they'll come for us, and we'll approve it all, but I would like to at least give them that to have the funds to purchase things. Like Mr. Ryder said, you're going in front of, you know, contractors. Materials are tough to get, so at least have them have the funding. It's going to come back this. Anyways, you said, at least have them money on hand when they find a deal or they need to get materials, and they have the workers. I'd like them to be able to buy it right away. So, that's my motion, to give them 70,000, and then the additional 75 as they need it for distribution.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, would we come back to the board, or could we, would this be administratively through the town manager?
I'm making the motion for the 145,000, but give them 70,000 upfront as they need it, and then 25 as they, as they, you know, the other 75 as they come back with the receipts and everything else they need.
I'll second that. I just wanted to clarify that they don't have to come back to the board. We're allotting, I would say, if you exceed that 145, for whatever reason, then come back to board, but allow the town manager to be the representative for the town to disseminate those funds.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So, if I understand this correctly, the initial distribution in Mr. Crapman's motion would be $70,000, and it'll be one subsequent distribution of $75,000 as the distribution is utilized.
Not to exceed 145,000 as requested.
Oh, not to exceed 145,000. So, a motion made by Mr. Crapman?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, I think I misunderstood that. So, it's, we're just front-loading the first $25,000 distribution into the initial distribution. The other three are $25,000 installments as requested.
Yeah. That works.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Crapman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, say them by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. It's a 4-0 vote, and good luck to you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We had work. We really appreciate it.
Please let us know if I'd like to look at it. I went by and looked at it in its state, so if we could go by and look at it when it's completed, it'd be great.
Sounds great.
We'll give you a tour, and we'll give you some, let me know. I'm willing to help. Tell me when.
Okay. Next on the agenda is water abatement and water meter discussion. Mr. Montori.
I think Select Board Member Crapman has asked to put this on, so I took turn. I'll gladly take it. I asked this to be on the agenda, so I just wanted to open a conversation with the Select Board members. We sat here in front of the, you know, at a previous Select Board meeting, and we talked about the water main break that happened, and since then, there's been other substantive, I mean, there seems to be a lot of water main breaks through our community. We have a failing water system. It's aging. It's nothing that the DPW is doing, it's nothing that we're doing. It's just, we have a lot that needs to be repaired or replaced. My, as the water mains are breaking, we are having residents have to run water for hours that are, because we have brown water. Once the water main is repaired, we're telling residents to get rid of the brown water, you must run your water until it goes away. Then we're charging residents for that water that we're telling them to run. And I just, it's, we have so many water main breaks that, and I've asked the town manager to talk to the DPW director, when does a water main break? I know we're running around trying to handle what we can do, but Mr. Hardeman, if you could come up here, because we're going to, I'm going to have a couple of questions for you as well. So, if there's a water main break that happens, do you go out in that direct area in the next couple of days and, or the next, during this time, and flush the hydrants for each and every water main break that happens?
Once the water is repaired, we flush until we get the water clean.
And so, you bring the hydrants out, trying to get rid of the brown water on every water main break that we have in the community, right after it happens?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, we have things where people have brown water for at least a day or two with some of these things, and, you know, when we have water mains, and we have high water costs in the community, and if somebody has to run that, and God forbid that brings you to the next level, especially during the summer times, I don't think that's fair to the residents, that we're charging them, and especially if that brings them to a higher level. You know, if you have to run so many gallons of water to get rid of it in your home, there should be some sort of abatement to the residents. I mean, we have smart meters that we have in the community. You can tell what is, what has happened, and, you know, if you have to run that much water for like a couple of days, we're not talking astronomical numbers, but to residents, it's frustrating. First, they have to deal with the problem of a water main break where they have no water, then we repair it, and then for the next day or two, they're dealing with brown water. And so, then they're flushing it and running water for hour upon hour, trying to get rid of it, and then we send them a bill for it. I don't think that's fair. I simply don't. I think there should be something put in place, and we sat here and we talked to the town manager, and we said, we'd look at this at a case-by-case basis, and we did that. And then residents sent in a request for abatements, and they received emails back saying, we don't do that, because we don't have a policy. So, here we are back again. We are the ones who can make a policy, and I'd like to at least have the Select Board have a conversation about finding a way, we're not going to replace all our water mains in the next two years or three years. It's going to be, it's going to be a long process, and people are going to be dealing with water main breaks for quite a while, and I don't want to have the residents think that we're not listening to them when they have to run their water to get rid of this, and then we say, we're going to charge you as well. So, I think there should be some sort of process where we give them a credit to order their next water bill, and give something to allow them to, you know, the wasted water that they're running down their drain. They shouldn't have to be paying for it as well. That's my thought on this, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hear all the rest of the Select Board things.
Okay. Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. Mr. Hardeman, I, listen, I feel your pain. I, you know, I deal with this regularly, and you know what? Not to this extent. I know, I think the big issue from what I've heard from residents is this last major water main break we had this past summer. That was a significant impact on large sections of the town. So, those areas had to run their water much longer than, you know, a smaller main break in an isolated street, or called the Zachary Dead End. This was town-wide. It disturbed a lot. It took a long time for the DPW, and they did a great job. They were out night and day doing it after the fact. You know, I agree with Mr. Crapman. At some point on a large event like that, obviously with the new metering, you can correlate the last three years of usage from that window to a main break, a major main break. The smaller main breaks, it's not going to be as significant. It's usually with flushing a hydrant, you're going to flush it out of the street, they may get a little brown water, it's going to clear up quickly. I think if we can come up with something on that major, major event like we had, and I believe that these residents put the abatements in for those where it was during that time. I think we can put something together for a policy that, if it's $15 or $18, at the end of the day, you know, that's, you know, a cup of coffee every day these, this time of the economy. That's, you know, 18 bucks is 18 dollars. And it shows to the residents that we're hearing them, we understand the frustration, and the town is willing to help you out. And I, again, I think it's a case-by-case, and it's not a perfect solution. And believe me, I understand it's not you, it's not the DPW staff. We have aging infrastructure. It's going to take a while for us to get through this, but I think putting something on, in the rules and regulations that gives you, the town manager, the authority to give that abatement, shows that this board's listening, that the town manager's listening, and then the DPW is listening, to their frustration and their concerns and their, you know, everything's getting more and more expensive. So, I think it's an opportunity for us, here the board, to listen to residents and put something in place. And, you know, it's going to be isolated cases on a case-by-case basis, but we'll leave that up to you and the town manager to kind of handle that. But the board putting this in place gives you the ability to do that, understanding now, we don't have that policy. It's not in the rules and regulations, but I think the board putting that in gives you the ability to handle that in the future.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hardeman. Good to see you. One of these times, we'll have you in here on a positive note. So, first, I, everything that has been said, retract that. Yes, we have bad water infrastructure, but I do have a few questions for you. Can you explain how we do abatements as of right now?
So, our current abatement policy, when a resident reaches out to us and requests an abatement, it's leak-related, so they had to have had a leak within their home or outside in their yard irrigation system. They have to provide proof of repair, so whether it's a leaking toilet, they provide receipts from Home Depot, or a plumber's receipt who came in and did a repair on something. And then we calculate what their average daily use was over the course of a year, and then we compare that to the duration of the leak, which is flagged in our system. We can see indication within our metering software when the leak occurred, and then we calculate what the leak volume is, then we calculate the sewer cost associated with that, and then we abate half of that additional sewer cost. And that, basically, the reason is, you know, as a homeowner, they're responsible for maintaining the plumbing within their house, they're responsible for that water that goes through their meter, but if it is associated with a leak, typically, it's outside irrigation systems, it does not go to the sewer system, and then we would abate half of that cost.
Is that, you know, commensurate with what your peers are doing?
It is. I think it's, it's in line, kind of generally across the board. There are some communities that do not provide abatements at all, because they feel it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain their property, their system, their portion of the system. There are other communities that set a standard where you're only eligible for an abatement if your water bill exceeds double what it was previously. So, you're effectively responsible for the first half, or the first 100% over, and then the town will step in and provide, you know, consider an abatement for that, anything over that.
I'm glad to hear that we do have a policy that does at least appear commensurate with what other towns who are doing abatements are doing. There was mention of the smart readers, or smart meters, I should say. I know we've had discussions about that a few meetings ago. It's been discussed quite a bit over the past year and a half. I think we're about to spend about a million and a half dollars on that. When those meters are put in, that will give you a far finer kind of knob to turn or finer clarity on that data when you're looking to do these abatements or investigate leaks, et cetera, correct?
It does. You know, the current software we have provides us readings about every four hours. The new software, it's every 15 minutes. But really, the big benefit of the new software is the user, the homeowner, can put in thresholds where they will get alerts and notifications. If, you know, for instance, if you're someone who, you know, has a certain schedule, you can set up your alerts to say, you know, when I'm not home, there shouldn't be zero water flow. Alert me if there's any flow, and things like that. So, it gives them, the homeowner, a lot more control over, you know, seeing what's going on in their system.
When we do get to like a midpoint in that project, I think it would probably be beneficial to do some educational sessions, even if it's a, just a video, YouTube video, something we can do to kind of get that word out. I know I, my house is only a few years old. I have one of the newer meters. I actually got a letter from you at the end of last year, because my irrigation system was leaking. So, I never would have known that without that letter, so it does show the system works. So, brown water. When somebody's getting brown water for a long time, what are your, do you have any approximations on why that's happening?
There's a lot of factors. You know, when you, when you look at the summer that we had, it was very dry. Our usage increased significantly over the same time last summer, you know, but was commensurate with 2022, when we had, again, a very dry summer, we were in a drought. You know, so when you have a lot of water usage, you have a lot of velocity, the water's, you know, coming out of the system a lot faster, and it churns things up in the system, and it, you know, causes that brown water to, you know, show up in areas where, you know, sometimes we normally wouldn't expect it.
Do we have any information in the informational session or on the website that talks about being careful with running hot water when there's a water main break, filling your hot water tank with your boiler with dirty water, and then having to try to get that cleaned?
That's probably a place where we are lacking. You know, when we have a water break, we tell people to run cold water. We don't necessarily explain why they shouldn't run the hot water, and that's something we can improve on.
That might be beneficial. I had a friend in town who had that issue, and I asked, and, yeah, they tried to take a shower while the water was out, and it worked. Well, it worked for a little while, because you were filling your water tank with dirty water. So, thank you. Those are all the questions I have for you. I will say, I'm, I think it's unfortunate that we have to have this discussion right now. I've been asking for a number of months to get a session on the books to address the root problem, which is, we've all agreed, is our aging infrastructure. So, I got to figure out what Mr. Crapman's secret is to getting something on the agenda in short order, because I'm missing something. Thank you.
Well, getting back to you, Mr. Mackey, per our discussion before, we're going to have the water work session before our next full session on the 22nd?
October 22nd.
Yep. At 6:00 PM, we'll start it.
Perfect.
It's at 7:00, we'll go into reg, out of the working session, into regular session. If we still have to continue, we'll go 6:00 at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay? So, that answers your question.
And it does.
So, Mr. Crapman just gave me a wink, and he got it done.
Persistence.
That's right.
I don't know how I could have been more squeaky.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hardeman. We're now on review of special town meeting one.
I was going to say, should we, I'd like to make a motion, or Mark, you want to make a motion, just to have Kevin and work with the town manager to put together a policy. And the abatement policy is great, and that's a standard. It's just the, when we have those major breaks, to give you the ability to, you know, use your professional judgment to work with that resident, and especially with that smart meter, it's really going to help you pinpoint, I'm sure you have date and time of all the leaks and, you know, flows, that it's going to pinpoint, that you can correlate the two, and it show residents, okay, this is exactly when this happens, you're right, you did have to run your bathtub, like we tell people, run your bathtub, run the cold water for X amount of time. It was, you know, 2,200 gallons, 1,800 gallons, whatever it may be, but this is what it was, and you can put a number to that, so.
Before we, the motion goes forward, I just got one last question, Hardeman. So, you received a bunch of, a couple of people at least, looking for abatements, right? Out of those ones that you reviewed, did they show that, yes, this happened during a water break, and yes, there was some extra usage? And it seemed like you don't have the ability, even if they showed you the documentation that showed, yes, this happened, you at this time do not have the ability, because we don't have a policy in place to do so. It seemed that was, it seemed like that was the email that went out, and it's like, we do not have a policy in place to give an abatement for water main breaks.
If I can just jump in. So, we, we looked at four requests, I think a couple of others might have come in, one other. Okay, so five requests. You know, the, I saw the email, and I saw the resident that posted it. I actually talked to that resident myself, and it is hard to pinpoint the exact amount. We're using approximates. We can't, we're not down to the hour by hour or minute by minute like the new meters, but, you know, it's... it's, it's all really approximates. We can't pinpoint it to the, to the flushing of groundwater to that day, to those hours. We just, it's just, it's not that easy. So we're, we're estimating it. Now, we can look at the days that the break took place, or the day, the day, that took place, that we knew people were flushing, and we can come up with an estimate based on, you know, the number of gallons we think we used. So it is, it's not an exact science. I will tell you that the individual I talked to that thought it was the brown water when I had the discussion and looked at the flow that was used, or the amount of usage this billing period compared to the same billing period a year ago, the amount of usage was the exact same usage. The difference in the complaint really was, my bill is just high. Okay? When you looked at the bill last time, last year at this time, compared to the bill they got this, this year, it was all in the 11 and 1/2% increase we had in the rate. It was nothing else. If you took last year's amount, added the 11 and 1/2%, it came up to the amount they were paying that they owed this year. When I explained that whole thing, it was like, okay.
We sat here, and we had, we talked about this, and we said, we do this at a case-by-case basis. And then we told residents to send it in.
Yep. No, and we have.
But no, but you have the ability, when we say, right now, we don't have a policy in place, even if they proved it, for you to give the abatement on a case-by-case.
So it's, it's not something we've done in the past, when there have been water breaks. I think that's really what we were saying. Not so much that there wasn't a policy, it's just not something we've done in the past. We looked at each and every one, and, you know, it ranged from $12.47 for one, $20.30 for another, $9.02 for another, $21.99 for another, based on our best estimate. I haven't seen what the last one was.
Well, I mean, I'm, I just, I get it. I get the whole thing, as we haven't done it in the past. But you had, you're talking about four residents and 60 bucks. And $60 to have residents know that we are listening to them, that are asking for something for a small thing, but that had to deal with a water main break. I know it's a nuisance for us to do it, but we're not talking about thousands and thousands of dollars. I mean, I know more people will come forward once they hear about this, when it happens. But like I said, we're going to have the smart meters, we're going to have things in place. If there's a major water main break and something happens, we have the ability. And if we're giving somebody back $28 as a credit toward the next thing, who had to go through something, and we show that we actually care, I think that's, that's a great investment from our community to say that we are actually listening to you. We, we understand that we have a problem. We're working through. Like Mr. Mackey's been asking for this meeting to talk about fixing it. And yes, and once they're fixed, we don't have to have this discussion. But that's not happening overnight. So in the meantime, we should be going above and beyond to show that we actually, you know, something happens, and it's something as minimal as that. It's like, you know, I would have given the residents 60 bucks out of my pocket, just to make them happy, just to, just to show that we actually care. And so for the town of Tewksbury, that we, we have very high water rates that are running that water, you know, we should be, at least have a policy in place that gives you the ability to do something like that. If we gave $60 to a couple of residents and showed that we cared, I think that would be a nice policy in place, that you don't have to send an email saying, we either, we don't, we haven't done it in the past, or we don't have a, I don't care which answer it is, it's still not the good answer to be sending out. It should be something that we can at least look at it.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question through you to the town manager or to Mr. Hardeman. Do you have the rate calculator on your website, dynamic rate calculator? Something I'm working on. It's, it's, so as Mr. Montori stated, having the ability to put that rate calculator on that puts in the tiers and breaks it out, because it, I'm very familiar with it, but someone that's not familiar with on how the billing works, and on the tiers and the rate calculator, and putting that on, and then you can change, looking at what the rate is, and look at last year's calculation versus rates, may have been able to answer their own question. So there's a lot of people out there that, if that's something you can do, I'd be willing to share the, I have the formula if you'd like. It is a dynamic, I'm working on it right now to put it into the website, so have the residents. But it's going to be a great benefit, that people can plug that number in.
We, we had the route, great calculator on the website. We took it down, we had some glitches with it.
With the new website, yeah.
And we are going to put one on. So that, that will happen. We did talk just a couple of days ago, just going over some of these issues and how we want to handle them. And one of the things that we should have done, and we could have done better, and we will do in the future, is we didn't do a good job letting people know there wasn't, there was an 11 and 1/2% increase. And we should have done that better, right? So I've talked to other communities, because we're going to try to get information on abatement policies to bring back and talk with the board. But we've, I've talked to other communities on how they do it, and some know their rate increase ahead of time that they put in the next water bill. So when a person gets their water bill for the last quarter, it says in there, in August, you're going to have this increase. Because that would have answered a lot of questions, because, especially the woman I talked to, no idea that that took place. So we need to get better in getting our messaging out, having information like the calculator, items like the calculator, that they can do that. We don't disagree that coming up with a better policy is not the way to go. And we'll do that. We'll do that. We're not, we're not looking to hurt the resident. We're just trying, we, we are being consistent in how we approach things. It may not be what you agree with, but we're being consistent in how we approach things. So we understand that we need to make improvements in these areas, and we're going to work on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate that, because I was going to say before that comment that it's not about the $60 for me. I agree. Give it to you out of my pocket. It's more, my concern is because of our aging infrastructure, the precedent we're going to set with all of these breaks, and if they continue to happen, I mean, it's taxpayer money going back to taxpayers, and then rates might have to be raised again, or something might have to happen if we start having hundreds and thousands of people that are coming in for these abatements due to the aging infrastructure, that we're going to have to find some way to offset that. So I'm not concerned about the $60 or the short term of it. I'm concerned about the precedent we set. As you said, making sure we're being consistent with residents and how we treat people. And if we're going to do a policy, I would be very interested into the data and the phrasing of that policy. So what is the threshold? How are we kind of confirming that information? I feel like it's going to be a lot more than a short, two-sentence policy, because there's probably going to be a lot that goes into it, because of the potential financial impact. With the amount of water breaks we have, if every water break had every impacted resident putting in for an abatement, that is going to get very expensive very quickly.
Right. And going back to what Mr. Ryder said, you know, the larger.
Sure. It's the larger event that's going to create that. Those small break.
Kevin and I need to talk about that and figure it out. And it will be a policy that will be long, because people are going to try to get an abatement when they weren't flushing groundwater. Believe it or not, that's what's going to happen.
And with the smart meter, you're going to have.
So we need to be able to fix, figure that out.
You know, the information, you know, once the process is complete.
And as you know, with some certainty, right? You know, all we really have is the numbers.
Sure.
We don't know what the water was or wasn't used for, you know, and that's the challenge that we face.
I agree. You know, I, I told a couple of residents during that time, here's an opportunity. I said, why are you, Lon, you're flushing your water anyways. Use it. I mean, and I explained to them, I'm like, you know, the policy, here it is. Don't just run it down the drain. Run the hose outside, so we're not processing, processing on the wastewater side. So I think some of that messaging, and obviously, it's, it's lessons learned. And really, that's what it is, you know? Having a major break like that, you know, you learn things. And, you know, it doesn't happen again, but, you know, we just, be prepared that the next time it happens, and give you all the tools that you can possibly have. Yeah. But again, good job, and to the staff as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ryder. I agree with the, with the policy. Can, when we meet on the 6 o'clock on the 20th, can we get just a rough draft?
We will.
Doesn't have to be silly, because I went online, Lexington has a water abatement policy, Wilmington has a water abatement policy, Woburn has a water abatement policy, and maybe we could take something and combine it into something like that, you know, especially if it's a major water break. I mean, I understand the $60 is not really anything to write home about, because it'd become an administrative nightmare. But if we did have a major, major break where people were spending, you know, flushing 5,000 gallons of water, even if 2,000 gallons of water down the drain, we have to have something in place.
So I just want to make a point, we do have a policy. I don't want anybody to think we don't. It's just not addressing the concerns brought up tonight that are all legitimate concerns. So let us work on that. But I don't want anybody to think we don't have one.
Or an amendment to the current policy to give you the ability to address this type of situation.
Yeah. We'll look, we'll look at what the other communities are doing, and Kevin and I, and we've already started the discussion. You know, Mark's been talking about this for quite some time with me, so we're going to try to figure out something.
Okay. We all set. We can move on to review of special.
Again, Kevin.
Thank you.
Special town meeting warrant articles. Mr. Montori.
All right. Let's.
Just stay here in case.
Might as well, just in case.
Oh, you're here. Might as well.
All right. Article one. Article one is a raise and appropriate of $733,084 into FY25 departmental budgets, to adjust those budgets based on need and projected deficits and items that came up after the budget was put together. The first, I want to just talk about, we have additional funding that we can raise and appropriate into the FY25 budgets because of additional state aid. We had $469,326 in additional net state aid. We've also have $1,150,000 in additional projected new growth, which has allowed us to have an additional $1,619,326 to appropriate at this town meeting. This warrant article specifically uses part of that funding, $733,084 to place into the following line items in the budget. The first is town manager salaries, $141,689 to fund a longevity and retirement incentive for the assistant town manager, who's retiring a year from January. Those incentives were not budgeted in the FY25 budget, they should have been. And then the remaining amount is for the salary of the new town manager to get through the end of the year, once they're appointed. The next is the town manager professional services, $30,000 is to continue the buildout of Open Gov. online permitting and license software for the planning department. The Open Gov. permitting and licensing software is funded within the town manager's professional salaries. And this $30,000 is the next buildout of the planning department's online permitting system. Car allowance for the computer services, $3,600. The systems administrator who works for the IT director, we did not budget for their annual car allowance. Assessor salaries, we did not properly budget for the longevity and retirement incentives for people in the assessors department, and for the retirement incentive for the chief assessor, who is planning to retire in April. That's $8,300. Town hall leases for HVAC, annual preventive maintenance, we needed to budget $2,900. Community services salaries, we needed to budget $2,700 for stipend for the town planner for overseeing and running the community markets. Police overtime, $50,000 to help get through this fiscal year. We're tracking what looks like to be a deficit in police overtime due to long-term injuries and vacancies. So $50,000 will, will be put into overtime. Police leases and contracts, $17,000 for overtime tracking software. This money was actually in the budget two years ago in FY25. We thought we could come up with the new software that would save $17,000, but the new software is not working out, so we're going to go back to the old, and $17,000 is needed. Fire salaries, $40,000 is need to pay for unanticipated early retirement incentives in the department. Fire overtime, also similar to the police, $50,000. We're tracking at a deficit in that account, similar to the police, due to long-term injury and vacancies. School salaries, $176,895. This is to fund the new collective bargaining agreement recently ratified by the teachers' union and the school committee. And the school operating, $210,000 for an HVAC service contract for the Center Elementary School that was not budgeted in the FY25 budget. This is based on bids for HVAC service, for an HVAC service contract, and the low bid was $210,000.
Mr. Ryder, any questions?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mackey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krappman?
Just, you know, we're looking at these salaries and the contracts. Is someone for retirement, there's people that left earlier, or is it, or is it somebody that, like, that is, you know, unexpectedly retired, or is it something, injuries, or what?
So it's, it's people who decided to, so we have a retirement incentive. There's some that give notice, they get 3 and 1/2%. Some people just didn't tell us till this year. And some of it's retroactive, other is just, we just didn't have, we just didn't budget it, and the person told us late. So it's just the timing of when they told us.
And the community development salaries, that's for the, does that cover the whole year of all the festivals and things that the town plan does?
Everything, yep.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board on Article one?
Make a motion to approve Article, to send Article one to the.
Okay. A motion to adopt made by Mr. Krappman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article two.
Article two is to transfer funds from certified free cash in the amounts of $536,362 for the following purposes. Just today, we received that free cash certification, and that was $7,132,516. The plan is to utilize the $536,362 for these items, and the balance, which will be $6.6,633,027, to be put into the town stabilization fund. This article in particular, just to go through these numbers, the first item, $223,355, that's for the short-term interest borrowing that we did for the Center Elementary School. The board approved that short-term borrowing, I think at the last meeting last week. This covers the previous year's interest and the interest we're projecting when the bond is payable in March. The reason for the borrowing right now, we have an outstanding, I don't want to call, we use the word deficit because that's what it is. It's a little over $3.5 million, because we're still awaiting reimbursement from MSBA. MSBA hasn't given us our final reimbursement. They haven't finalized the audit, so we don't know the total they're going to give us. They still owe us a significant amount of money. So we didn't want to long-term borrow what we have remaining on that project until we know how much MSBA was reimbursing us. I didn't want to borrow $3.4 million for the next 20 years if we didn't have to. We only want to borrow what we need to. So we short-term borrowed in the meantime, and this is the interest on that short-term borrowing. The other thing is, we wanted to wait until we long-term borrow until January, because we thought, we felt interest rates were going to be cut, and they in fact were. So this helped us out in our, in our planning. The next item, $60,000 for a school internship program. The school has an internship program, a student internship program that they run, that was funded by a grant. The grant did not fund the entire program, so 60,000. The grant did not fund the entire program, so $60,000 is needed to supplement the remaining part of that program for the students who took part in that internship. Ambulance computers, we're looking to purchase what they call two new Rhino Tab portable MTD units for the ambulances. The current ones, the current laptops are five to six years old and outlive their life cycle, so they'd like to have new computers to withstand the use of public safety. Munis training evaluation and module implementation, this is something brought forward by the town accountant. This is going to be used for Munis pace training evaluation and implementation of costs, implementation costs for time entry and employee self-serve modules and the completion of our cash management module. So those modules will be part of Munis, and we'll need to do training on those. The next, police station improvements. This was brought forward. There are two improvements to the police station that we'd like to make. The first is to replace the rubber, the worn and damaged rubber treads on the stairs in the first, leading to the first and second floor. That's $7,959. And during our last elevator maintenance, preventive maintenance review, 12 car guide rollers need to be replaced in the amount of $4,878. A fire engine, a seagrave's engine repair, $10,000. These are necessary for the fire department's 2010 seagrave's fire engine. During a recent service, it was noted that the crossbeam under the truck is starting to show signs of rust and rot, so we had a price to repair that, and that's $10,000. Multipurpose all-season machine, I sent the board some information on this, $70,000 for the DPW to replace a 2018 Camellia machine that currently is functionally deficient, is costly to repair, and the third-party software we use for the machine is expensive to maintain. The replacement machine will have more diversity, versatility, can be used on roadways, operations including paving, drainage, and sidewalk plowing. Equipment trailer, $10,000. This is a $20,000 trailer that the general fund will pay 10, sewer will contribute 5,000, and the water will contribute 5,000. This trailer will replace an existing 2008 Towmaster trailer used by the DPW. The existing trailer does not have the capabilities to perform the needed work of the DPW. The current trailers that we have cause the departments have to make multiple trips during projects. This trailer will allow us to load multiple pieces of equipment onto one trailer. The asphalt paver trailer, $10,000. Again, that's a $20,000 trailer being split between general fund, water, and sewer. This will replace a 2000 Northern Bay trailer that is beyond its use for life. The new trailer is larger and can accommodate large plates that the roadway plates that the DPW utilizes. Currently, we have to borrow a trailer from Wilmington to mobilize large plates for our operations. Senior Center needing a new boiler, that's $10,000. Facilities and grounds is looking to purchase a new water trailer to assist in maintaining the infills at Livingston and at the, for both softball and baseball. Currently, when they maintain the fields, the dust that is generated from the work they're doing is problematic, and they would use the trailer to put moisture on the fields to minimize the dust. And then finally, facilities and grounds is looking for a lawnmower, a new ground master 4500 lodge lawnmower, $80,943 to replace smaller aging mowers that they're currently using to do grass cutting. This larger mower will allow them to cut larger spaces. As we know, the fields down at Livingston are fairly large, and this new mower will be more reliable than the smaller aging ones. And that is it.
Board members.
I have a couple of questions. Okay. The, I was going to say, the ambulance computers, I get the $12,000. Are we keeping track of all the costs that we're using for, I know we send money to the state each year looking for reimbursement for trips generated of going there, but are we keeping cost evaluation of money we're spending to update our equipment as well when we're, because we're looking for reimbursement from the state? And yes, you know, they're paying for, you know, we tend to get it, then they take it away, then we try to get it back again. It's like a shell game we play with the state each year. But, you know, we should also be keeping track of, we're making investments in our equipment, and these ambulants are going up and down to the Tewksbury State Hospital on a regular basis. If we're spending money to do so, I would like to keep track of that so that we can show from the state when we're looking for reimbursement that we're putting these costs in as well.
Yeah, see if we can come up with a formula.
Okay. Second thing is the all-purpose machine. I like the fact that we're buying this, that we're looking to get something that's going to be doing other areas, but we've had this conversation many times during the wintertime of, we don't salt our sidewalks, we don't do that. I get it, you know, the priority is clearing the roadways, clearing off the sidewalks. But when we have, I mean, the last couple of years, we've had not the biggest snowfalls that have happened, but yet I see people still in wheelchairs because we play that shell game of the plows clear the street, we clear the sidewalks, then they clear the driveways and push it back in, and now we got areas where it's covered in snow. And then I see people in wheelchairs going from Hethelwood up to Market Basket in the street. If there's this new equipment, would there be like an attachment or something that possibly in the future that if we don't, we have a snowstorm on Monday, we don't have snow for the rest of the week, and we already cleared the roadways, could we go out and hit specific areas that would be concerned to be able to put some salt on those sidewalks?
Yeah, they do make attachments for that, and that's something we can look into.
Okay. That'd be something I'd like to see. If it's an all-purpose thing, it's, I'm sure it comes with attachments, and it's, you know, we tend to salt the sidewalks around the schools, the senior center, town hall, but yet, you know, other areas that are very traveled, you know, they don't tend to get the same attention. I'd like to, at least, like I said, I understand you can't do that. We don't even plow all the sidewalks, but, you know, when we get through, I'd like to see if we can plow as many as we possibly can in specific areas where we have concerns, especially with the senior facilities, where we have Bayberry, we have, you know, Emerald Court, we have all the different areas where there's other things where if there's an opportunity to go and maybe just, because we pre-treat our roadways, this would be the same thing, of pre-treating our sidewalks and clearing them as well. So I'd like to see that happen. The senior center boiler, I know this has been dying for years, and so this will be, we're breaking this up into multiple accounts is what we're doing, is it?
No, the senior center boiler, it actually died.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the, this is only coming out of free cash to replace it.
Okay.
To pay for the replacement, and we...
$10,000 is going to cover for the whole boat?
Yeah, that's the boiler, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's, well, then, okay, I'm happy to see that number then. And then the...
And there's just, there are still HVAC issues and other issues down there. The chiller now is a problem, the generator's a problem, so they're having other problems, but this is for the boiler.
Okay. And, you know, I see things that, like repairs and improvements to the police station, other things. Did our facilities engineer go in, did Vinnie go in, make these recommendations to do these type of repairs and replacements?
Vinnie's involved with it.
And that's, I've always said that Vinnie is one of the best investments we've made in this town, because, you know, we always hear about how our buildings are falling apart, we're replacing a roof, we're doing things, so the care and maintenance of maintaining our buildings, I think that's a great investment if we want to have our buildings last and make sure he's going through. So tell him thank you for finding these things and making recommendations before they get out of hand, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I'll just kind of follow up through you to the town manager, the boiler. Are we looking at the potential of warrant articles for May Town Meeting for the chiller or the generator?
So...
I understand the lead time on a new generator right now is about, I don't know, maybe 51 weeks.
So they're going to, they're able to repair the generator?
Okay.
And they'll be able to address the chiller. I'm pointing it out because we're going to use the maintenance account at the senior center to fund that, which we can. And there may be some grant money that they can pull from. We also have, Vinnie has a fund that he uses as a catch-all. We may need money at May Town Meeting.
Okay. And that's why I'm just looking at, you know, we know the lead time on a lot of this equipment.
Everything right now can be fixed.
Okay.
It just is not something we anticipated, and that's why the $10,000, the boiler has been replaced, this $10,000 will go back in the account to help pay for other things.
Okay. Great. No, that's all I have. And again, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Hardeman, the multipurpose machine, you will find it will be a great asset to you.
Yes.
We, I have one, and it's been, it's a great machine, it's very versatile, so much better than a, you know, a track machine, a standard track machine that's used in the wintertime, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Maggie. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board on Article two?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Adopt.
Again.
Motion made to adopt.
Second that.
Made by Mr. Reider, second by Mr. Kratman.
Pass this out.
All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a four-zero vote. Article three, Mr. Montori.
So Article three is going to be amended. We had two bills come in after the town meeting warrant was posted and printed, so this article will be amended to add two bills to the original article. So instead of asking to raise and appropriate $23,998.69, we'll be looking for $25,203.69 to address these bills that came in after July 1st. Just quickly to run down these, the RICO bill is a lease copy for the treasure collector. The play-away invoice is for a book in a USB cord at the library, that's $56.99. The previous bill was $13.78.93. SOFO's invoice for the anti-software virus for the annual contract, $14,486.79. A Laidlaw invoice for $470 for the subscription to the Civil Service Reporter. Metro invoice was for clothing for police department, community policing, $583. Avishon Capital One and Avishon Capital, the two Avishon bills were maintenance items at the police station, one was $13.99, the other $7.99. Hammond invoice was for hydrant paint for the DPW. Alert Scientific was for an invoice for preventive maintenance and calibration of equipment at the water treatment plant, $2,817.50. Torrid invoice was for the installation of backflow preventers and maintenance at the East Street Pump Station, $3,627.50. Net Lab invoice was for testing services for the water treatment plant, $398. And then the two new ones, New England Alarm Services was for testing of alarms at the Regional Communications Center, $805. And then LaSalle University, $400 for a drone certification prep cost.
Board members, any questions?
I just have one question, and it's not about this actual article, but I see as we're going through each article, you're reading off the summary that we provide to the residents. Once this meeting is over, I mean, we're going to, we all sit and we get questions on all these things, and we don't, and people like, you know, I never see the breakdown. I know we hand that out, that's the thing, but once we get through these, is this going to be put up online?
Absolutely. We were waiting for free cash to be certified. It wasn't certified until today. So the town accountant is finalizing some financial information that I like to put on the website on how free cash was generated.
Yeah.
Also, we've updated all of the funds that we have that we're pulling from, so the hope is to have this up on the website tomorrow at the latest Thursday.
Okay.
And what we normally do is we will send out constant alerts that it's on the website.
Okay. No, I think this summary is invaluable for us breaking through, we're just, I mean, we're familiar with it as being the board, but for residents that are curious when they look at some of these numbers, especially since we're changing, like, you're not going to re-mail the article, so if you can update that draft and put those, the one, Article three that's been changed, you can put that information on there?
Absolutely.
And then if we go out to this way, people will have the information as well.
Yep. No, and that's, and that's an excellent point. So what the handout will have, and we'll have any amendments, so there's going to be amendment to this article that we just talked about, amendment to Article, I think it's eight, when we transfer money into the stabilization fund. It'll list any scrivviness errors that we found once the warrant was printed, and all the other financial information. So we try to put as much information into this document as possible. Anybody has any comments between now and the time we go to print and put it on the website, let me know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just have one question, Mr. Montori. These bills collectively, are these bills that came in after the year end?
It did. So we have up until usually July 15th to still process any bills from the previous fiscal year. These all came in afterwards, once the books were closed.
I was going to say, because it's three months before you get paid, I don't know if I'd want to do any business. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recommend adoption of Article three.
Had a motion made by Mr. Maggie.
I'll second that.
And second by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a four-zero vote. Article four, Mr. Montori.
Article four is to raise and appropriate $166,237 for the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Police Patrolmen's Association. This, this is the first-year cost of the contract. The projected second-year cost of the contract is $141,830. The projected third-year cost of the contract is $189,524 for a projected total three-year cost of $497,591. The highlights of the contract from a financial standpoint include a 2.5% salary increase in each of the three years of the contract. It also includes a 1% increase for post-certification in the first year, a 1% increase in the second year, and a 2% increase in the third year. Also added to the contract was Juneteenth as a holiday and one personal day.
Any questions from board members? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article four.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kratman, second by Mr. Reider. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Four to zero. Article five.
Article five raises and appropriates $221,014 for the collective bargaining agreement settled between the town and the International Association of Firefighters. The agreement is a three-year contract. The first-year cost is the $221,014. The projected second-year cost is $169,358, and the projected third-year cost is $187,006. The three-year total cost of the contract is projected to be $577,378. Again, the financial highlights are 2.5% salary increase for the three years of the contract. It also includes a 0.5% increase in EMT stipend for the first year, 0.5% increase in the EMT stipend in the second year, and a 1% increase in the EMT stipend in the third year. Juneteenth was also added as a holiday, as well as an additional personal day.
Any questions from board members?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article, recommend adoption of Article five.
Second.
Given a motion made by Mr. Kratman, second by Mr. Reider. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article six.
Article six is to transfer $160,000 from Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the following one-time items. Sewer retained earnings were also certified today by the Department of Revenue in the amounts of $6,145,87. The board will see a breakdown of how we got to that number. That is not retained earnings for just one year. That's cumulative for many years. So I don't want to think we just had to...
That's the balance.
Yeah. It's the balance in there. Yeah, it's the balance in there. So we'll have a breakdown of how much was in previous years and how much was related to this year. The items that are being asked for in this article, the first is $100,000 to fund, to have a contract for a deep cleaning of the larger sewer pump stations and repair and parts as needed to keep those pump stations running efficiently. The larger pump stations are the East Street, Andover Street, Florence Ave., and Fraser Lane pump stations. Significant volume goes through those pump stations, and we want to have them cleaned and maintained to ensure their reliability. So that's $100,000. The next three, two items, the $5,000 for the two trailers I talked about previously. The next item is a vacuum jet machine on a skid, $40,000. That is being split between the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. This machine is going to be used to clean out gate valve boxes and other small infrastructure components so they can be operated, so the gate, so the valves can be operated and maintained on a regular basis. Currently, we don't have a program for that, and this machine will help us do that. Light tower, $10,000. This is another item that's being split between the Enterprise Funds, Water and Sewer. The total cost is $20,000. The funding will replace a 2006 light tower. We use the light tower to illuminate work sites at nighttime for both water main repairs and sewer backups. This provides for a safer environment for the DPW to work in. And that is it.
Any questions, board members?
I have a question. Mr. Hardeman, how many light towers do we own in town? I mean, I know you may have, what do you have, two, three, or what do you have for light towers for the DPW?
We have one light tower.
You just have one?
Yeah.
And do the other, Water and Sewer and the other ones, does anybody else have other light towers?
No, just...
You only have one throughout the whole town?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we have.
And that's the, so when we buy this new one, is the other one going to still be, are we getting rid of it? Are we keeping it in operation? Or what are we doing with the one we're replacing?
We'll keep it, you know, and we'll use that as a backup until it, you know, becomes more costly to do anything with.
I notice multiple times during a year where we're out and we're paving roadways at night, or we're doing pavement markings, or we have, like I said, a festival that's down in the, the things where people are crossing the roadway, or we need this light tower to do it. And so I don't have a problem with the investment. I just would like to know, like, you know, it's, it's, water main breaks, we're going to be using them quite a bit. I can see that in the future. We're going to need those to be out there to be able to illuminate, especially if, God forbid, you're trying to find one at night. But like I said, is there any way to make an investment to maintain the existing one so that you have something to go to multiple locations if that need to be?
Yeah, the one that we have now is operable. As you know, the, the wear and tear on those is driving them out too and bringing them in from the site.
It's 2006, I got it.
So it's made a few trips.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, it's not the, I'm not questioning the need. I'm just questioning, you know, like I said, we have work to do. We're trying to get some things done. I just want to make sure you have what you need. So if we're making an investment, I wouldn't even mind seeing something coming through that said, you needed a second light tower, if need be. So you have it so that you can get to these locations. I don't want to have a, here, somebody getting hurt on a worksite because there wasn't enough light. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So ahead, Mr.
Anybody else? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt, recommendation of adoption, Article Six.
Second that.
Made by Mr. Ryder, seconded by Mr. Mackey, or Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's four to nothing. Okay, Article Seven, Mr. Montori.
Article Seven is transferring $160,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund for the following projects. The Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings are also certified today. The total that we have in the balance for Water retained earnings is $1,858,983. The 160, the first is to, we are seeking $100,000 to replace water meter endpoints and water meters. We have 400 meters, approximately 400 meters that are currently not working, that we want to get out there immediately and fix. This is before we even start the major undertaking of replacing all the meters. It was mentioned earlier that we have a program that we're starting using $1.5 million to replace water meter endpoints in town. That project, by the time it gets going, isn't going to start till, probably in January. This will allow us, this $100,000 will allow us to purchase the proper materials or equipment, and we're going to have town staff go to these locations and actually address these 400 problematic units. Right now, these bills are being estimated, and we need to get accurate readings for the, both the residents and for the town. So this $100,000 will allow us to do that and get us up to date. The other items, the vacuum jet machine on a skid, the equipment trailer, asphalt paver and light tower, we already spoke about. This is the Water Enterprise share of those items.
Okay, board members, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, motion to recommend adoption of Article Seven.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey.
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and chair votes aye as well, four to zero. Article Eight, Mr. Montori.
So Article Eight will be amended at town meeting. Again, we just received final free cash numbers, so, and I'll have this in the handout. It'll be amended to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $797,035 and transfer the sum of $6,596,154 from certified general fund free cash to the stabilization fund or act in any, or take any other action related relative thereto. This will add funding to the stabilization fund, so we have money available for future use. Currently, the stabilization fund has $12,579,307 in it. This money will allow us to address any emergencies or any capital items in the future. The next three to five years are going to be very difficult financially. The town is in good shape to get through the next two to three years, I believe. It's going to be years four and five that will be difficult, so putting money aside and preparing for the future is going to be critical. This will increase our stabilization fund, which is there for emergencies and one-time purchases in the future.
Okay, any questions on Article Eight?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Could you repeat those numbers, Mr. Montori?
Yes.
First numbers, I got the balance, but just the first numbers.
So how much we're putting in?
Yeah, please.
So we're going to raise and appropriate $797,035, and then we're going to transfer $6,596,154.
Thank you.
I have one last question, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've said this a couple of times at the meeting, and I've listened to you tell us that we're good for the next couple of years, but we have concerns in years four and five that we never talk about. It's like, what are the major concerns that we have? I'd just like to have that all and open over.
So what's going to, and eventually, so the next, over the next few years, because of the way we've planned financially, our local receipts are at a, at a level that they can be raised to help us get through any potential deficits in year. We're definitely okay this year, FY '26 and FY '27. But because just the costs, and these are all based on assumptions that I project, right? So anything beyond three years is always difficult. But when you project out 8% increases in health insurance, 6.65% increase in retirement assessment, 3.5% on average in salary increases, just as an assumption, budgets just continue to increase, right? We are limited in what our revenue is because of Proposition 2.5. New growth is projected to be about $1 million over the next five years after FY '25. You know, projecting '26 through '30 to be about $1 million. That could be higher. We've always seemed to do well with utilities and their personal property, so it could be higher than that, but we're not seeing a lot of major development coming in the next four to five years that are going to give us the high value. We do have residential developments that takes place in town, but that's not a high-value development. So when you take all of that together, there are concerns, you know, years four and five. I can, Mr. Chairman, at the next meeting, I have, I can update the five-year projection based on all the financial information we got today, and I can go through all of the assumptions and what it looks like for the next five years and how I think we can address it.
Okay, that'd be fine.
That's kind of it in a nutshell, Mr. Kratman.
Well, it's, when we're looking in the future, and like I said, you know, we're talking about the residential growth, and it seems like that's the way everything's, we're not building that much commercial, we're going that. You know, I, you know, I'd like to share that information as much as possible with the planning board as well. So when we're doing something and we're, you know, they're reviewing the developments that are coming through, and, you know, I see a lot of developments that especially happen on 38, where it has that mixed use in those type of things, and next thing you know, they want to convert the commercial over to residential. And it's like, and some of them, things are planned, it's just like, it's, you know, I'd like to at least have, like, I think it may even be in the future to have a joint discussion with the select board and the planning board about concerns going forward and what the needs for commercial base and how we can address that. And, you know, maybe even look at our zoning again of what it may do. But it's like I said, I don't want it to, don't want to keep going down that road of building residential, 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 and then we're getting into financial straits. So if that's one of the things that are leading us that way, then we should have that conversation. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt Article Eight.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, seconded by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well.
Kevin, you're also.
Just an FYI on Article Nine. The Community Preservation Committee approved the article, just so everybody's aware.
So Article Nine seeks to appropriate 3.8 million.
Kevin, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Seeks to appropriate $3.8 million to renovate and rehabilitate the historic Ella Fleming School at 1503 Andover Street. $2.8 million will be, we're seeking authorization to borrow funds to help pay for the costs, and a million will be transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, which currently has a balance of, let's try and pull that up, $3.6 million in it. This is a project that we've been working on for many years. We started working on the Ella Fleming School probably six or seven years back when we did building envelope work to the building, windows, exterior work, and roof. We recently completed over the last year, removing hazardous material from the interior of the building in preparation for renovations. We hired a consultant who has done a design of the layout and renovations for the building. They have not moved to the next phase, which is construction documents, until we receive approval from town meeting, but they have developed a schematic design for the layout. The cost estimate that we received from a professional cost estimator has the building coming in a little over $3.7 million for construction. The reason we get to the 3.8, we need additional funding for project oversight and management, as well as leaving some money for just general costs for bidding. The project will be to renovate the interior of the building, add a lift that will go to the basement, improve handicap, allow for handicap access to the building. All of the mechanical items in the building to be brought up to code, both plumbing, electric, and HVAC. The, there are three room, three classrooms in the building that'll be renovated. Two of them will be, all the building will be renovated to his, to the proper historic character. Two of the classrooms will be left vacant, and one will be modeled after the, as a model for the one-room schoolhouse era. The two that are left vacant will be used for general community use and used for other items that, and Mr. Kratman has been involved with this discussion, the hope is to use it for, you know, arts and music and cultural events, and the students in the school system who take part in those type of projects or programs. So it's the, it's really, it's really the last and only historic structure that we have left that the town owns to renovate and save. I know it's a significant amount of money, but the funding is there and to be paid for by the Community Preservation Funds. We are not taking money away from any town budget or any town service. We are not seeking to increase taxes in any additional way to pay for it. We already have a CPA surcharge, and space is needed. And I'll let, I'll slot in, Mr. Kratman, talk more on what he's talked about when we've talked about this building, but we do need more community space. This building is used a lot. There are private groups, nonprofit groups, that are always looking for space that we cannot accommodate, and this space will be available. So I believe the building will be utilized. And the space that we're going to renovate for the historic, you know, remembrance of a one-room schoolhouse will be something from an educational value, but that room will also be able to be used. It won't be just shut off to, to use. So, and the basement, just last, one last thing, the basement will be used for storage. That's also needed for the Historic Commission and Society, as well as the town, and a lift will go down to the basement for that purpose.
Okay, board members.
Mr. Chairman, I've been involved in this project, meeting with the Historic Commission, meeting with members of the school, other people in town to talk about this. As Mr. Montori mentioned, this is one of the last buildings. We've had so many buildings that the residents have been really upset, that have come down, and we haven't made an investment to save it. I know the number is very high, do people see that? If you take down this building and build another building, for much less probably of what you're going to do. But you, people want to preserve the history of this town. This is something that was built, it's got a history behind it. This was a teaching school. They've done, there's books on it, there's documentaries on it, there's all kinds of things that they've done on this school that was created. And the Historic Committee is adamant that we should finally make an investment to preserve something of our history, and I agree with them. So preserving the building is the number one reason, but secondary, we've made a lot of investments in our high school and our elementary school, and we've built things for the sports teams and to the fields and, you know, all kinds, you know, built a new football field, we built a new socket, we've done everything in town related to sports. We really haven't made any investments to our arts and our drama and our, the kids that need that kind of space. You know, I see the kids when they come to the Memorial Day Parade, the Fourth of July, all the different things, they come and they show up and they do those type of things. Celeste Pellegrino does a fabulous job with those kids. But they're limited in space. They're always battling with either somebody, the basketball team or whatever it is, somebody using the location to be able to have their place. They do wonderful plays at the high school. They do, like I said, you have the marching band, they're trying to get that better, come up. The elementary school has a, they're building that, the band backup, that hopefully we can bring those people up. We really don't have a location that the arts can... We really don't have a location that the arts can be used, and I'd like to see if, I mean, this is going to be a general space for everyone, but it would be wonderful to have like an Ella Fleming, you know, playhouse, where the kids could go practice their plays and have those type of things, and have something, a building of their own where they could go and have something, you know, we could have artist group come in and do their paintings, they could have the, you know, the drama kids come in and practice their plays, you could have the kids from the choir and the things, to have a location where they're not fighting over space, especially during sporting events. So I think having something like this would be advantageous to the town and something that we could make an investment. We've made a lot of investments on other things, and I think, you know, this would be something that would be helpful to the community as well.
Anybody else?
I just want to mention that, you know, it's great that we, through, that the Mr. Manager stated that this is not raising taxes, it's not coming, we have the funds to pay for this, and that was the intent of this fund, to rehab buildings of this nature. And I understand it is expensive, but construction costs are what they are, and it will be a great building and be able to use by multiple organizations and groups after the fact. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, just to clarify, because as was just mentioned, and you mentioned previously, we're not raising taxes for this. So I did get a question earlier. The debt service for this is coming out of the CPA.
It's coming out of CPA.
I know we just, we just stated it, but that's been, well, if we're paying for it, we already have money, why are we borrowing? So just wanted to clarify that for those watching at home.
Yep, and just, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because I want to mention the, the town hall debt also comes out of the CPA fund, and that was a 20-year borrowing that we did. The plan is to borrow the 2.8 million to match the debt schedule of the town hall, so when the town hall is done, this will be done too, so they're both done together. So there'll be no lingering debt for the CPA. So this will be a 10-year borrowing. We already have projections on what it would be, and we've ran out the costs, and it can be, absolutely can be afforded within the CPA.
Thank you. With that, I would make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 9.
A motion made by Mr. Mackey.
I will second that motion.
You have a second by Mr. Krappman, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's four to zero. Article 10.
Article 10 is to rescind unused borrowing authority that was voted at previous town meetings. What essentially this is, is in previous years, we approved the borrowing of funds for certain projects, and we borrowed enough to do the project, and there's still unissued debt on the books that we don't need. It's not actual money, it's just authorization to borrow, and we're seeking to rescind it. Ames Hill, $25,000 is left on that debt, that was a $500,000 authorization, we borrowed 475, there's 25 left. The Annex Roof Solar Project, back in 2009, $85,000 was authorized, we did not spend any. The high school, the original authorization was $80,986,690. We borrowed $70,219,487. The unissued debt is this $10,766,582. Water treatment plant had an original authorization of $13.1 million. We borrowed $13,057,433. The unissued debt of $42,567 is still left unissued. Roadway and drainage improvements, this dates back to 2010, $3 million was authorized, none was borrowed, so there's still $3 million unissued. $2.5 million for the center fire station was authorized, not borrowed, so that's still unissued. And $1.1 million for the Astill Street water tank, that was authorized, but we did not issue any debt because we used retained earnings. All of this debt can be rescinded, it's always good to clean the books up, especially for the financial institutions that review our bond rating, so we're looking to do that.
Any questions from board members?
I had one, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager. The $3 million for the roadway improvements, what, what did we, we originally went for the $3 million?
Yeah, it was back in 2010, May of 2010, and at the time, we were thinking of doing River Road in that area.
Okay.
That got funded and paid for, and we didn't need to do it.
Okay.
Instead of taking on the debt, we just let it go.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll sit, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, so all these things we've borrowed and we didn't spend as much as, like, we just talked about raising this money of the things, I mean, is it, are we, is it something that, I mean, it seems like we're always returning something when we're borrowing this. If there becomes money available in other things, will we be considering the same sort of thing, borrowing this thing? Because I know that's, that number of 3.8 always sounds awfully big when I'm looking at the previous comments, so.
So, yeah, if we don't, and that's, and that's, you know, the best example is the discussion we had earlier about the elementary school, we don't want to borrow more than we need. So for the Ella Flemings, once we get bids in, then we'll determine how much we need to borrow.
Yeah, I know, because you're going off an estimate, right?
Right.
So, yeah, okay. All right, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to adopt Article 10.
And I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's a four-zero vote. Article 11, Mr. Montori.
Article 11 authorizes the select board to accept an easement from North, from Andover North Estates LLC. The easement is for a sidewalk at 1563 Andover Street, the standard article.
Any questions?
I do. So the easement that's for this, is it actually, is it on Andover Street and North Street, or is it on just, where, where is the easement that we're?
I'm not sure if it's on North Street, I'd have to check.
Okay. Either way, I'm okay with the easement, I would just, I notice that there's a great need of sidewalks in those locations, especially what's, what's going on with the hotels being converted to housing and other things that may be happening. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping an eye on the sidewalks up there, so I would, I would like to focus on that North Street continuation in the future. I know that has nothing to do with this article, but I'm hoping that if they are doing something down that North Street, that like we, that'd be great to see if they're, they're going to continue that. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 11.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made by Mr. Wright, a second by Mr. Krapp, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 12.
Article 12 is seeking authorization from town meeting to allow the select board to submit a home rule petition to change the charter, to remove the 10-mile radius that the town manager is required to live within the town, within the boundaries of the town. Back in 2015, a similar article was brought to town meeting, it was approved, it didn't eliminate the 10 miles, it increased it to 50 miles. It went to the state legislature. They filed, the delegation at that time filed a bill, and for some reason, it just, it never passed, it died in committee. We went back to the delegation, asked, asked if they could bring the, bring the legislation back, they said that, and we spoke to council for the House, and they said, because the two legislative sessions have gone by, we needed to get town meeting authorization again, so that's what we're doing. And we're just eliminating the 10 miles.
Any questions?
I have a question. So the original article, we changed it from 10 miles to 50 miles, but with this, we're just eliminating, it could be anywhere.
Right, it could be, and we originally brought forward to eliminate it, it was amended at a town meeting to go to 50. We just figured it was, eliminating it makes sense, we just don't know where, you know, people commute now long distances to work. So I just didn't know if the, if the board wants to amend it, we can do that, this is what we brought forward.
I'd like to have a town manager with, who lives within an hour of our location.
I was going to ask through you, Mr. Chair, what did we, the advertisement for the new document?
We didn't say anything either way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that, and it's a valid concern, you know, I prefer not to have a town manager that lives at the Cape.
Yeah.
You know, again, people travel, I don't disagree, but.
And the think, the thinking was, you know, that's, regardless of what the charter says as the appointing authority, you're going to take that into consideration when you make the decision, right?
Obviously.
But that's, it's totally up to you. This was just to get this on the, on the town meeting, if you want to put a amendment into, put a threshold of miles, that's, that's fine. Anything's better, 10 miles is just too close.
No, I get it, and I'm not looking for something for 10 miles, but I also, I think there was a reason that the residents wanted, we want somebody that's going to be here within, like, God forbid, there's an emergency, and I don't want to have somebody that's, you know, like I said, on Springfield. So I would like to have somebody that within, so I like that 50 miles, that was there, and I, you know, I would want to make the amendment to make it, to go back to the original of what we submitted to the state that we voted to for approval of, you know, shall eliminate the 10 miles and bring it to 50 miles, so she'll live in there.
We can, we can absolutely add that in.
Yeah. That's my perspective, all of the rest of the board.
Motion to recommend adopt, motion to recommend adoption of Article 12 as amended.
I'll second, oh, yeah, second. I think, you know, just with the new town manager that we'll be appointing at some point soon, I think it's, it's beneficial to have somebody that is close by. Again, Springfield, Cape Cod, Far New Hampshire, again, I think the intent is not to have him necessarily live in town, but also have them available and close by in case of an emergency.
50 is reasonable.
Sure, I think that's valid.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Wright, all those in favor for adopting Article 12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's four-zero vote. Next up is a big one, Article 13.
Yeah, Article 13 is something that we're required to do based on the new Cannabis Control Commission policies and procedures. This was enacted a couple of years ago, that the new policies, policies and procedures adopted by the CCC wanted to ensure that those who have been disproportionately harmed by the enforcement of marijuana laws are guaranteed a fair and equitable, equitable access to the industry and to promote their full participation. So this new equity, municipal equity bylaw that we're proposing is the model bylaw that the CCC is requiring all municipalities to adopt, and it, and it goes by their, it goes by their guidelines and pulled right from their, from their information. You know, there was a question the other night, what happens if it's not passed? My guess is if it's not passed, then any new applications might not be approved by the CCC. It doesn't say that we have to, you know, depend, if, if the applicants that come in front of us do not come within this municipal equity guideline, meaning that they, they weren't harmed by the municipal, the marijuana laws, that doesn't mean you can't award it to one of those applicants. What they're saying is if you have a pool of applicants and one of them is, has been harmed by the enforcement of marijuana laws, you need to make sure they're treated fairly, and that's it.
I'm confused about this one.
Yeah, it's, I guess, I guess through, through you, Mr. Chair, these are the current guidelines that the state is, is the state looking at this guideline when their application goes to them? Or they, or they just saying, well, the municipality has to use this guideline, and does this give any preference to anyone that's been harmed? And who deems the legitimacy of being harmed, and how is that proven?
So the Cannabis Control Commission is saying that all municipalities that have, that allow retail marijuana must have this municipal equity bylaw in place. Now whether they use that same guidance when an applicant goes in front of them, they haven't yet. They want cities and towns to make sure that they're treating applicants that have been harmed fairly, so you're not just outright discarding them.
Okay, I'm still confused at the, what is the term harm? And who is, if I'm applicant A, comes in and says, I've been harmed by this, do I get preference? Is there a preference requirement? Does, once we adopt this, does that change how we give out our next license?
Um.
Concerned with that, saying, well, we haven't, now we have to.
So harmed, we, I have not seen a definition, but my assumption is harm means anybody that's been arrested or incarcerated for violating marijuana laws in the past, okay? It will not impact the licenses that are coming forward. If no one comes forward that was harmed, then we don't have to go out and look for that. We can still address the application you have in front of you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager. Has town council weighed in on this?
He's been in discussions with Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick in developing this, but if you want, I can get more of his opinion on it too, and you can bring it up at the next meeting.
I would recommend that, in a synopsis, basically in English, so we can understand, you have all these different MLG laws, and what you are telling us is that if we, the Cannabis Commission, which is in total disarray these days, you know, is demanding that we do this, I would like a little bit more information, again, in something a layman can understand, something people at town meeting can understand.
So we have a summary that we'll be having the handout, I'll make sure you have that for the weekend and next week. I think you have the schedule to meet at 6 o'clock prior to town meeting, and I'll have town council there.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
They're working, you can table this until then.
For, for that discussion, having read this, I have no issues with the applicability definitions, transparency, practices for host community agreement negotiations, it's when we get into equity standards and municipal equity plan that I'd like to understand more on.
Sure.
The CCC's intent and what they're mandating that we do.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, and will this, if we do not, if the town does not pass this or the board does not approve this to go to the town, meaning how does this, will this affect our, our other license that we have not granted? I, I just concerned that.
Good question.
It seems there's a lot of, you know, do as we ask you to do, but we're not necessarily following the same guideline, so.
I think we still have open questions with CCC from previous applications, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a couple of questions to the town manager. So did the state send something to us, asking us to put this in place, or we?
CCC.
So they sent something to us, asking us to specifically put this in place, and the other municipalities around us that have the licenses are doing the same exact thing?
I can double-check what the others have done.
I just, like I said, I, I think, you know, they tend to change with the state quite a bit, and, you know, if this isn't something that, like, you know, what's the urgency of putting this in place if there's no ramifications to doing so? If it's like, unless they're saying, like you're saying, you don't know if they're, if this will affect the license going through. You don't know if, you know, if they're even going to look at, if we have this in place of what it is, so why are we putting it in place if, if it's like, like, what benefits does this give the town? Do we get like some sort of credit when applications are going through that benefits the town from the license approval?
No.
Or are we just doing it just to, because they want us to do it, they're just, you know?
Yeah, there's no, there's no benefit or, there's nothing like that, there's no requirements or assistance.
And revenue honestly isn't where it used to be to, to some of the things of what we're looking at, and we're, now we're getting even more of, when we're talking about equity and sharing, it's just. and sharing, it's just, you know, it's like, if we put something in place, we're putting in something that, you know, that we're, we're giving, it's like we're giving something away, it seems like, that we're approving something without any benefit. They're not telling us that we have to do this, and they're not saying they're going to deny a license if we don't do it. So, and then we're making an approval, you know, we're looking at the revenue and how we're supposed to do it. Yeah, like as Mr. Mackey was saying, I'd like to have a little bit more of a conversation on that, why we're doing this at this time.
Also, one more additional question. There's a lot of mention of pre-verified individuals. My lay reading of that is that the CCC will be pre-verifying people, which does not give me a warm fuzzy on them telling us which applications we are able to consider.
Okay. I can get that information. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
It's complicated, and I'll have Town Council and Steve.
We're sitting here, four members of the board, not knowing what it is. I can imagine just sitting at town meeting. And I'd love to see you writing this draft summary of how this is going to be simple, simple, because we don't know what it is, and I don't want you spending, you know, two weeks drafting something up to simplify something that we don't understand, so. Yep. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to table Article 13.
Second. I have a motion to table Article 13 to our next meeting, town meeting. I have a second by Mr., I mean, I have a motion by Mr. Mackey.
I'll second it. Just a quick question, will we vote on it? Did the Finance Committee vote on this?
Yes, they approved it. There were some questions.
There were similar questions?
They had questions, well, what if we don't do it?
Yeah.
And the column was, you could hold up the next applications.
Okay. No, but I second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Crapman, of table in Article 13. For 13, to our meeting just before, on October 1st at 6 o'clock. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. That's a 4-0 vote. Article 14, Mr. Montori.
Article 14 is amending the town zoning map as depicted in the picture for the groundwater protection, plume area, buffer zone for the Sutton Brook disposal area. This is something that EPA asked us to bring forward and amend the current map and the boundaries of the plume area and buffer zone. And if you look at the map, it's actually, look, it's actually shrinking more than expanding. So, EPA is requiring us to make this change based on the testing that's going on out there, and we brought the map forward for approval by town meeting.
Motion to recommend adoption of Article 14.
I have, before we vote on it, I do have a question on it. There seems to be some residential area along this. Does any of this water protection or any of these votes, with this, by voting on this, does this cause any, I'm thinking insurance and issues or anything like that? Where we're shrinking the location, so it's not something that, where these homes or anything that may be in the area would have to have any additional insurance or whatever, water planes or anything like that?
No, there shouldn't be any issues like that.
Okay. I just want to clarify before we vote on it, but I'll second Mr. Mackey's recommendation. I just wanted to get that answer prior to voting on it.
I have a motion by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Crapman to adopt Article 14. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, 4-0. Article 15, Mr. Montori.
So, Article 15 and 16 are petition articles. There's no one here to speak on them. I know the planning board met on the articles last night. The petitioner presented them. They only approved Article 15, they did not approve Article 16.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have, you know, I have a concern on both of these articles. They're biased citizen petitioning to reduce setbacks in town center. We just had a conversation about, and then you go to, that's Article 15, and then you go to Article 16, that you look at these allowable uses in town center, and they were no for a single family, no for a townhouse, two-family and multiple family, multi, at two-family, and then giving permission to the planning board. So, they were not allowed prior, and now they want, these petition articles are giving the ability for planning board to give special permit.
Sorry, correct, point of clarification, non-special permit.
Non-special permit, so by right. So, and that was, that was my next question, James. So, is it a special permit? So, it's now it's by right, allowing the setbacks in the town center? You mean, and Mr. Crapman just stated about the issues with the town center and what has been built over the years of the commercial with the residential above, and now these commercial units are basically, because they've sat unfilled, and now they're being converted to residential with planning board approval. So, basically, they're building a residential development and just sitting on one unit that was supposed to be commercial, and in these articles, they're looking for setback eliminations or reductions or allow, and then allowing the planning board approval. Again, I think we just went through, the town went through a zoning change, and this was not brought up. If it was a good idea, it would have been brought up by our consultants, and the planning board would have addressed it. I think that, if anything, I would like to tighten what is happening in the town center overlay district, not loosen it up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not overly fond of the changes that are happening here. Mr. Reider raised some good points, but historically, this board has taken no action on petitioner articles. So, I just wanted to put that out there for posterity's sake, and that would be, my feeling is that we maintain that for these two articles, but I do share similar concerns in some aspects.
The only concern I have with that is the residents of this town look to this board to give them a recommendation whether we motion to adopt or motion not to adopt. And it, my opinion, just my opinion, that this is not a good, these are not good articles. They're not good for the town. So, I don't think that just because we haven't done something, we should just say we're not going to take any action on it. My opinion. I make a motion not to adopt.
The only, again, I don't disagree with your sentiment on those two. My big point is, and I think it was the sidewalk article last time, my big thing is always, it is a lot for a resident to go through the process, and again, this is a little different than some other resident articles, but it's a lot for someone to go through that process. That process exists for a reason, and I would not want to take that away from somebody. Again, I do understand and appreciate the sentiment, but that's just my personal. Mr. Crapman?
I got a question for the town manager. So, this article came in front of us, we posted out that we're going to be going through the warrant. Has any, was the person, the group of whoever was petitioning for this article, were they made aware of that, that we're going to be voting on it tonight?
Yeah, I'm going to have to find out exactly what type of notification went out. They didn't go to the Finance Committee either last night.
If we're, they're asking us to make recommendation and nobody shows up to our meeting, and I think there has been articles, I know historically, we usually take no action, but I believe there have been specific things where we have said, no. That is, I don't think that's a, I mean, Mr. Montori, do you have any recollection of us doing some? I thought there was some, maybe.
I'd have to go back and look.
A number of years ago, where something has come before us, and we're just like, you know, it's like, it's, you know, we can take no action, which is the simple thing to do and let the petitioner go in front of the board, but I would also, I'm in the thing of tabling it and asking when we have, if we go back to it and ask the petitioner to come in front of us.
Can do that for Tuesday.
To clarify what they're doing and let them speak to us. I'd like to, I mean, it's, we have some concerns with this. You know, why are you bringing this forward, and what's the, I'd like to have them say to the public in this forum, instead of, and knowing what it's about prior to getting to town meeting and have everybody, you know, confused of what's going on. It's like, we're looking at the setbacks, why do you need the setbacks? What's the plan? And I'd like to hear that. And especially if something's coming in front of us, and they want us to vote on it. I would expect, it's no like any other permit or anything else that comes through us, is, you know, if you want us to vote on something and it's just sitting in front of us, the petitioner should be sitting in front of us lobbying us to tell us why they want it, or we can take no action. I get that. It's, they'll go out to the voters, they make the decision when we go to town meeting, but like I said, I don't want to also take no action when something like clearly is bothering members at this board.
And through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager, it also, diverse housing uses. What is that intent?
Not, I don't have any idea.
Again, there's a lot of, again, we went through a zoning change, and this was not brought up of, in the best interest, you know, and that was not in the best interest of the town, and I sat on that committee, and this was not, and I sat on that planning board when we had projects come in front of the board and requesting setbacks, variances and so forth, and the board said no, because they were put in place to protect abutters.
If the board would like, we can contact the petitioner or the petitioner's attorney, I think, who spoke last night at the planning board, to come into the meeting at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, and if they choose, and present to the board. And you're already hearing warrant articles that night, and I would just make sure you limit the speaker to a time, because it could go on, because you have other articles you need to get to town meeting, but you can do that Tuesday at 6.
Okay.
Clarifying question, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager. Nothing that this board does prevents this article from going to town meeting, correct?
Nope, it goes to town meeting regardless.
I just want to clarify again, for the residents watching, I think anyone watching gets the sentiment?
No, no, absolutely valid, and this board, Mark bringing it, this board, you know, residents look to this board and other boards for guidance, and, you know, guidance on town meeting floor is not what they're, the time and place. You know, they know when we're discussing this, this has been advertised, and think there's an opportunity.
I think that having them come in is the best option of what we're doing, because I agree with you that this is something, if you disagree with it, you know, of what's going on, it's just, you know, if you disagree with something strongly, you shouldn't be taking no action on it, even though historically we have. But I also agree with Mr. Mackey, where it says, it's very difficult to get warrant articles on the thing, and we don't want to discourage somebody to file something.
Valid concerns, yeah.
So, let's have somebody come in front of us and explain it so that we can hear why and what they want to do, and then we can have that vote.
Again, there's a reason why someone is proposing this.
Yep. There may be something that they may come in front of us that may change our opinion, but if I was seeing it right now, I'm not in favor of myself, so.
Thank you.
So, we had a motion on the floor, do you want to withdraw that?
I will withdraw, through you, Mr. Chair, I will withdraw the motion and recommend that town manager ask the applicant to come in and speak with us.
I make a motion to table it.
Table, okay, table, and then request town manager, applicant, and or attorney to come in to speak to the board.
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Amend the motion for Article 15 and 16 with date certain of October 1st at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Reider, seconded by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor.
That's through table both articles, correct?
Just wanted to clarify, thank you for clarifying, James.
We have a motion on the floor, so, how does, and it was seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. What's next?
That's it? Thank you.
That's it?
No council invoice?
No town council thing for any house? No minutes. Town manager, you have nothing.
Think I've said enough.
No minutes. Board member reports?
I'm just going to, just want to thank everybody for, we had the 9/11 ceremony. I just want to, I have the LRTA later in the week, but I just want to thank everybody. It was a great ceremony, takes many hands to have everybody come together for that, and it just, it was a very nice thing that we do for our community, but the town manager was awesome, Vinnie was awesome, the school department getting the kids there, the fire showing up, the police, the Boy Scouts, the parents that bring their kids there, it's just, it's such a community group that we, you know, always made that promise 23 years ago, never forget, and Tewksbury shows up proud each year, and so, I want to thank everyone, thank you, Mr. Reider, for coming down and helping out passing out. We had, there was such a crowd there that it was amazing. We had, you know, I think we, town manager got us 150 chairs to have out there, and we probably had 200 and something people there, because we just ran out, and so, there was a nice crowd, nice ceremony, and I just want to thank everybody that took part of it to make it happen.
Very good. Anybody else? Are we none?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Crapman and seconded by Mr. Mackey to adjourn. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good night, Tewksbury.